My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murgy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. And I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree. And she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School. And now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
And I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Board would like to welcome the audience and thanks you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live on TV 190 or online at tcaps.net/bored. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. Trillet's kindergarten class from Westwoods Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just for all.
Oh, it's just cute.
We had the review approval portion of the agenda. I actually did have one change, which doesn't have to go in there, but I would like to make it a little cleaner if we could put 9F, discussion. I'd like to just have a general board discussion on the upcoming, we've talked about a policy committee, I just wanted to go into what I was thinking. Technically, doesn't require an action of the Board, but I feel like it would be good to get input as a group.
And I'm sorry, what is it again?
That's to do policies. So basically, as we do policies, we're going to review. In the last meeting, we basically are going to do a lot of policy adjustments, switching from Neola to Troon. So developing a committee to handle some of that and how we would do it.
So you're just adding 9F?
9F as a discussion item, which will be Policy Committee, I guess. So if that is acceptable, or if there are any other changes? I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. I think because there was a change, we can do a roll call vote. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to public comment number one, is there public comment?
Yes.
All right, the Board has set aside this time for public comment, and individuals addressing the Board shall have one opportunity to speak, and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage comment courtesy and constructive feedback. The detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3.
Susanna Tobin?
Hi. Is that good? My name is Susanna Tobin. I live and work in Traverse City. I'm going to read my remarks so I can keep myself from rambling. Thank you for listening to me speak today, and thank you for all of the hard work you do on behalf of the kids. I know your jobs aren't easy, and I really appreciate your dedication. I attended two of your public information sessions regarding the upcoming bond and have a few thoughts to share about Central Grade School. First of all, let it be known, I am a big TCAPS fan. I attended Eastern Elementary School, West Middle School, and Central High School. Both of my sons are also alums of TCAPS, and they too are big fans. They were lucky to have grown up in Central Neighborhood, where our family has lived for over 30 years, and Central Grade School was their epicenter. The neighborhood friends, here I go, the neighborhood friends they made at Central Grade School will always be a part of our family, and they know they can still walk into our house without knocking. I'm also an architect. I was part of the group of architects and engineers who helped save the main historic building at the former state hospital from the wrecking ball. There, we developed a schematic design that involved the demolition of various sections of the 300,000 square foot existing building. This made the building more functional and less expensive to develop. At one of the TCAPS bond information sessions, I spoke with the principal architect from the firm that is in charge of assessing the current condition of the existing school's TCAPS. He spoke enthusiastically about the renovation of a historic middle school in Escanaba, Michigan, that his firm designed. They were able to keep a significant portion of the historic building intact and incorporate contemporary additions in areas that needed to be upgraded. I support a similar solution for Central Grade School. Central Grade has proven itself to be a successful school and the heart and soul of the neighborhood. This is an excellent opportunity to help it continue to serve TCAPS and the broader Traverse City community. On behalf of all the past, present, and future Central Grade School students, thank you for listening and considering this approach to preserve the history and embrace the change. Thanks.
Woody Smith?
Hello. Following my articulate wife, my name is Woody Smith. I am a resident and business owner in Traverse City. I also want to echo Susanna's appreciation for the experience that our two sons had. They are well-educated, principled young men who just happen to be fantastic musicians as well. And it's thanks in large part to the work of TCAPS, the educators, the administrators, the people that serve on the Board. Because of my appreciation for the district, I've done my best to try to be involved in supporting the work of TCAPS. Over the years, I've been a classroom volunteer. I helped to found a 501(c)(3) organization called initially the TCAPS Alumni Association, and then the Friends of TCAPS, that raised thousands of dollars initially in funds for homeless students and then general funds to supplement the school budget when we felt like, members of the community felt that there was a limit to what the state funding was providing. I was also on the Citizens Committee that helped organize the last bond renewal effort, and would like to be involved again. So I'm going to echo what Susanna said, Central Grade. I know that the decisions are not imminent, but I also know that time will accelerate quickly over the summer. I think of it as a tremendous jewel. It's not just for the neighborhood, of course. It's for the entire district. Over the years, I've gotten to know lots of people who have chosen that school as a school of choice, people who have had their kids go there because of support for developmental delays, people that have been there for a variety of special programs. Everybody loves that school, that site. It does not need to stay the way it is right now. Selective demolition seems like a very reasonable approach to preserve this tremendous asset for our community. Thank you so much.
Scott Richards?
Scott Richards, Interlock in Michigan. I'd like to talk to you about the sex education. Our children, growing up in these days with single-parent homes and probably moving a couple times during their schools. I don't think you should be teaching sex education to our kids, especially people under 30, because people under 30 don't really know what they want until they're over 30. This is God's holy word. If you want to know about sex, it's all in here. Everything's lined up. One of the favorite verses of mine in here is, "There's no fear in love, and perfect love casts out fear." And once you know that love so much, you're not afraid of anything. My second one is the goal of this command is love, which comes from a pure heart, a good conscience, and a sincere faith. Why a pure heart? Because people that are pure in heart will see God. So this is his love letter to us. It's God's holy word, but I think it's a love letter. It's also a history letter. You can learn all about history and hear about people that decide not to obey this word. You can see what happens to them. Nations like Israel and other nations that didn't follow this word, and you can see what happens to them. The other thing is, I'd like to give a shout out to State Trooper John Hatfield. He does a wonderful presentation on cybersecurity for our young people, about the phones and the computers. And these books, Red, White, and Blue, Gender Queer, Foxy Crack, they don't need to be in our schools. And if anybody in the audience doesn't believe me, I have pictures right here. A lady I showed them to decided to put them in this pamphlet because they were so dirty. She didn't want other people to see them. And I don't really want other people to see them either, but they're in your schools, and that's not right. One last verse, Matthew 18:6. Whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him or her to have a millstone hung around their neck and drowned in the depth of the sea. Just protect our children. They don't need to see these books.
Jill Hammer?
Hi. I am here tonight to follow up on our discussion last month about removing cell phones from the school day at TCAPS. Since the last board meeting, we listened closely to the Public Curriculum Committee discussion, and I wanted to highlight a few items for the entire Board. First, we did not hear pushback from the administrators on an away-for-the-day policy change in the K through 8 buildings. In fact, there were several comments that a uniform policy across TCAPS was needed. There was no pushback from any of them that phones are beneficial to the educational process at TCAPS. Second, we heard Dr. Van Wagner say numerous times, both at the beginning and the end of the meeting, that the administrators need clear direction from the Board as next steps. The only way phones will get out of the school day is with clear Board leadership to make a change. Third, much of the curriculum committee conversation was discussing individual policy ideas, an envelope system, cell phones being placed at the door. All of that discussion is on a more granular policy that can only be fully fleshed out once the administrators understand the direction they are going to get from the Board as an overarching policy. For example, if phones are away for the day in K through 8, there's no need for cellphone holders on the doors. Fourth, we have heard it said from the Board and the Superintendent that the school district follows the data. The data is so crystal clear here from years of national and international studies, and even the Surgeon General report recently, that phones are terrible in an educational setting, that the Board needs to make the decision to get them out of the educational day now and move forward. Talking with the community for months about the topic or polling the teachers is not going to change the data. If this Board is serious about doing what is best for the TCAP students, we recommend cell phones should be removed from the school day tonight. Lastly, the change that Forest Hills Public Schools made in 2019, going phone-free for all grades K through 12, was mentioned many times. From a case study written about Forest Hills, Superintendent Dan Bem noted that, quote, "During my 19 years as superintendent, nothing has impacted education so quickly and significantly as technology," end quote. After 10 weeks of the new policy, Mr. Bem had lost track of the positive feedback from students because there was so much of it. He had never seen one single change have such an impact on students so quickly. Kids actually talk to each other at lunch, and they seem alert and fresh, and behavioral incidents are down. I would like to close with a quote from Mr. Bem. "You often hear about capturing students' hearts in education, and that's a wonderful thing. But if you don't have their attention, you'll never get to the heart. In other words, we have to first make sure we capture their brains so that we can get to the heart. Smartphones were standing in the way. We had to do something," end quote. You have the power to make the same change tonight. Don't let the opportunity pass you by. We appreciate all your attention to this topic. Thank you.
Brian Letting, Lettinggud? Apologize if I pronounce that wrong.
Brian Lettinggud. I have a daughter who will be a senior at Traverse City Central, and my son graduated from Traverse City Central. New to the district for three years, and I will just read my thinkings. I'd like to share a voice as both a parent and former school leader with this group, that I, like others, whether in this room or not, am in complete disagreement with the proposed idea of moving toward an away-for-the-day change to the current cellphone policy, especially in the high schools. While there will be a lot of talk about that and reports that shared cell phones have negative effects on student learning, I believe this has already been addressed, at least at Traverse City Central. This past school year, when the high school moved to a no-cellphone use in classrooms over this past summer. The majority of current research sites, schools are moving toward no-cellphones at schools to student distractibility and classroom engagement and classroom management. However, we are now talking about the very little time our students enjoy out of the classroom each day in high school. Students enjoy roughly 65 minutes a school day to themselves to connect with friends, see teachers, connect with parents, brothers and sisters at college. It'd be nice if they could be trusted to listen to music on their phones at this time, or to connect with these friends, or other friends across the district, talk to parents during the school day about their day, and manage their personal calendars during this time, all through the use of their cellphone. I'm looking forward to hearing more from this group tonight and over the next several weeks about the data that has been collected at our school levels that suggests such a change in the cellphone policy is needed. I'm also curious as to what our students think of this proposed change in the high school. Has student leadership been engaged in this process? Additionally, I'd like to hear from this group or the school administration teams regarding two other inconsistencies within the TCAPS policy. I see you're adding general policy review tonight, so this might be some extra talking points. The first item, the use of extra credit by teachers in the high school for advanced placement courses. It is clearly stated in TCAPS policy, and I'll read from grading 5, 4, to 1. "The Board believes that the district's grading system should be a reliable system, and one that ensures that each student's grades signify accurately his or her degree of accomplishments of those expected learning outcomes which are to be stated for each grade program at every grade level, kindergarten through 12." Extra credit is clearly not a reliable system, nor does it reach and echo a student's grades. It's simply grade inflation. Another practice I'd like to explore, or have you explored?
Sorry, the time is up. Thank you.
Paula Colombo?
I have a prepared statement, and then I think I can make public comment. So to the person who just spoke.
Paula, will you move your microphone down a little bit?
Yeah. For the person who just spoke, I would add that I agree that it's really nice for students to be able to engage with each other and communicate for that 65 minutes that they could have access to their phone. But I would remind everyone that students are in school approximately 40 weeks a year, five days a week, eight hours a day. That leaves the remainder, which I can't do the math because I'm not a savant, for them to communicate with people and to spend time. And so we're asking them to be able to communicate face-to-face as opposed to via a cellphone. So I'm support the TCAP school board reviewing and approving a more restrictive cellphone electronic device policy for TCAP students. As you may recall, at the June board meeting, public comment provided an overwhelming amount of evidence in support of a more restrictive policy. A more restrictive and well-implemented policy will allow our students to learn and our teachers to teach. I understand there will initially be challenges with the acceptance and implementation of this policy for students, families, and staff. However, these challenges and the additional work for teachers and administration will eventually be outweighed by the benefit of less distracted students and teachers. This will lead to an improvement in academics and the social and emotional health of our students. I understand the potential acceptance and implementation of a new policy would happen within two months from now to the start of this 2023 school year. However, and ironically, TCAPS can use electronic communication channels, including email, texting, Instagram, and Twitter, to rapidly inform students and their families of these potential changes. TCAPS can also work with local media, including the Record Eagle and the TC ticker, to share this policy change in advance of this 2023 school year. Thank you.
Jean Eukerman? Ackerman?
It's my printing, I think. Ackerman, yes.
Ackerman, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Jean Ackerman, and I'm a trustee in Acme Township. And I wanted to come here tonight and introduce myself to you. I'm one of the two-person team. Working with me is Doug White, our supervisor. And the Board identified the two of us, the Acme Township Board identified the two of us, to be the main contact for your negotiating team in your administration office. And so I wanted to come tonight because I saw it again on the agenda, and I thought that if you had any questions and you wanted an answer, quite possibly I might be able to help you. And if I don't have the answer, I will do my best to get it for you and get the answer to all of you. I want you to know how excited Acme Township is for the vision that we have for the property, and a lot of positive comments about that. I think a vision is very important for a piece of property, such as what we're doing now. And I know there are other areas where we're still negotiating, but negotiation is a process, and a process takes time. It can't be raced through. And we want to thank you, the Board, and I certainly here tonight. Want to thank you for your time to read the materials that we've had, and for just your discussion and your time to take this seriously. We're very proud in Acme Township, and thank you for your time. Good night.
Jay Berger?
Well, first of all, again, thank you. I think the public comments are just indicative of how difficult it is to run a complex school system. There's a lot of things going on. You never make everybody happy, but we appreciate the good time and effort that you put into this. I also watched the curriculum board meeting where the cellphone policy was discussed. I thought it was a great meeting. I thought the discussion was respectful. I thought it was helpful. I thought it was helpful. I thought the questions about implementation were spot on, and I really appreciate how several trustees have really wanted to dig into the issue. Beth Pack and Andrew and Josie Ballinger, who's not here, have been great about asking for input, and, and that really builds trust in the community. I don't know what the decision will be, if there will be a decision, but just appreciative of the time and interest you put into that. So, so thank you all for that. Uh, my takeaway from that meeting was, uh, that there was a lot of good discussion, uh, but an understanding that cell phones do not add to the educational component of school. Nobody talked about our kids are better or smarter because we have cell phones access at school. That didn't come up one iota. I think the second thing about is that connections is a big deal. I'm part of a task force called Safer Kids, Safer Schools, and one of the things we've learned and studying over the last year is connected kids don't shoot up their schools. And you don't build connections by staring at your phone. You build them by sitting at lunch and talking to people or being outside and having a smoke in the enchanted woods or wherever it is you go. You do it face to face with those kinds of things. So that's the real world. And again, I think those are really important things. I think, again, it was great to see the real agreement on the board, that it's about implementation and how you go about doing that and being thoughtful. So my recommendation is for TCAPs to continue on this process. I'd love to see something implemented for the school change, but I really want to be supportive of what you decide. So thank you very much.
Bill Wiesner, um, Traverse City, and, uh, well, Scott was mentioning, uh, that verse about tying a rope around your leg and throwing you in the leg, the Bible verse. Um, the last page here, I hope you all got this handled. I had enough for everybody here. Uh, pass it around. Um, the back page, the title of this webpage where this is on is Matthew18.org. I'm pretty sure it relates back to that Bible verse. Uh, this is, um, get the facts about comprehensive sex education or CSE. Uh, here's excerpts from, it's comprehensivesexualityeducation.org. It's a great site to show the other side of this. We're using comprehensive sex ed. They show how it can be very harmful to the kids and not helpful. So it says how CSE harms children. Now, this is from CSE programs around the country, not necessarily what TCAPs is using. However, what have we seen the trend in the last 20 years to sexualize? TCAPs have certainly been down that road. Uh, I started in 2000 looking at this issue, and it's more and more and more each year. So this is the way it's going. So how it harms children, CSE teaches children to masturbate, maybe not at TCAPs, but in many of the programs. CSE encourages acceptance and exploration of diverse sexual orientation and gender identities. CS, even though by TCAP's own statistics on their sex ed program, shows 85% of the AIDS, um, from sexual, sexual contact that they show for TCAPs, not for TCAPs, but in general statistics, CDC come from men. So why would we promote both equally, for sure? They're not equal. CSE promotes high-risk sexual behaviors, including anal and orio, oral sex. CSE promotes sexual pleasure and promiscuity, promiscuity as a right for children. And you can go on on that, um, going down to false claims about CSE. It will prevent sexually transmitted infections. It will prevent HIV and AIDS. It will prevent coerced and unwanted sex. It will prevent violence against women. It would delay the onset of sexual debut, um, and so on. And going to the second page, uh, it just goes on with more. I'll skip that one. Or it's entitled, the false core philosophies upon CSE programs are, the first one, a right to sexual pleasure even at the youngest ages is a primary right that trumps other rights. I'll finish this at the next public comment, if I could. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
That's the end of public comment.
All right. Thank you. Uh, moving on to superintendent's report, Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, so, uh, legislatively, we have a budget. Um, now, what exactly that means for us, we're still figuring out. Uh, lots of line items, um, lots still of unknowns a little bit. So the, you know, really big kind of news out of that is we do have a transportation categorical for the first time ever. Um, there was $300 million that was deposited into a new transportation fund within Treasury that will fund 150, 125 to 150 million dollars each year over the next three years, um, to provide funding for transportation, and it will be, um, done on a, a per student, per square mile basis. So, um, huge win. Been trying on that one for a long, long time, and so it was really fun to finally see that come to fruition and, and it'll benefit us. It'll probably benefit even the smaller districts like a, a Benzi, you know, there's more, um, that have, uh, you know, less kids per square mile, but it'll definitely impact us. But because Treasury has to make these different categories, we're not exactly sure what that looks like. We're not sure what that funding means for us on a per student basis, but we'll learn eventually and, and, uh, we'll adjust from there. Um, there's, there are things in there, many of the things we've had, safety and security and mental health have been wrapped into one fund. Um, basically about the same amount, maybe a touch more, um, which says that of that fund, 50% has to be used for mental health. Um, so we're going to be taking a look at that. Um, as I emailed the board this morning, you know, we would love to be able to work towards increasing mental health capacity, but we are, we've, we've lost four social workers, um, so far this summer. We've hired one. We're, we're negative three right now, just from where we were when school ended. Um, so we're trying to look at some different unique ways to look at, there is some money in the budget that looks at, uh, programs to, um, start, uh, people in programs, alternative programs for teaching, but as well as maybe social work and some of these others that have a bachelor's degree and maybe as an accelerated type program thing. So we're going to look into those programs. We're not going to leave, you know, any stone unturned to look at maybe some out of the box thoughts to bring some people into that mix to help our kids in that aspect, but do know that staffing is a challenge, and while we may have some resources to do it, we're probably actually right now in a worse situation than we were at the end of the school year and services right now. So crossing our fingers and hoping we're able to find some people, but, uh, a lot of work ahead of us on that front. We met today and talked. Uh, but lots of other things that are in there. Um, the, the per pupil basis was, uh, exactly what we budgeted. We had hoped it was a little bit more, uh, from that aspect. It landed where the governor had landed on that from our presentations and finance. But overall, I think it's a, it's a good school budget. I think it's going to be positive for us. Um, we still have some details to really figure out what that means, and as we get through a little farther and knowing what that is, we'll be sure to let the board know, um, on that. There's also some things with, um, teacher, uh, bargaining rights that were changed as well, um, that we're working on, uh, right now. As you do know, we did ratify last month, uh, three-year contracts with all of our groups, uh, that extension, and so, um, much of this will not, uh, be affected until a point where we go back to bargaining, but, uh, there are some things of, uh, um, certain prohibitive subjects that are now subject to bargaining, some of those elements. So we'll continue to work with our legal services as well as MSB and others to learn what all those mean, and we've had great relationships with all of our groups, and so I think we're, uh, you know, we're, we're in a really good spot with, with all that, but, uh, um, you know, that there definitely have been some labor changes that are there that, uh, will be changed moving forward. Um, so a lot happened with the legislature. They are now out, uh, for summer in districts, uh, time, and so, uh, we'll continue to look at what are some other types of things that we can look at as far as the district and things to continue down that equity line for funding for all of our students. And, uh, just thankful to all the work. I, I can tell you, there's multiple times that I talked to John Roth, John DeMoose, and Betsy Kofia, um, many, many times through the process, and they were all right calling me back, right entering their cell phones. They were, all three of them, no doubt, were in our corner as far as, especially on the rural transportation, you know, elements. They were all three advocating with their colleagues and, uh, big success. And, and, and Betsy is a freshman legislator to really get that was, was huge. So, uh, thankful for all their work, and, uh, again, we'll continue to, to look. We did share with you our, our NEMSA, NEMSLA, which is our Legislative Association for Northern Michigan. We do have, uh, a, a summer session, uh, where we try to bring in a legislator and, and some of those folks in August, so you've all got an invite to that, and would love if you have an evening you could participate to be a part of that. So that's what I have for my legislative highlights. Are there any questions anybody might have?
No, I mean, it's very exciting. Like, being silent, but it is very significant and very exciting and something we thought would take a lot longer to achieve, so.
Glad to hear that Betsy was a big push behind that.
Yeah, and, and John DeMoose too. Every time I talk to John DeMoose, you know, part of the, you know, the Senate, there needed to be some votes of Republicans, you know, to get for immediate effect, and he was right there as that was one of his key items. That and, and if you knew the new, the new freshwater center that's being built, those were his two key legislative priorities. So to have bipartisan support from our region was, you know, that wasn't everywhere, and so to have that, that was really important.
I saw Betsy in a deli this afternoon and thanked her again for that, so she was thrilled to be able to help with that.
I just, a quick question just on the, um, the social workers that we lost. Um, what, is there anything we can do to set ourselves apart that others? I mean, I know it boils down to money. I mean-
And contracts, I mean, they're a part of our same group as our teachers and everybody from that standpoint. Where in private industry or those elements, it's different groups. There oftentimes, even the ISD, I mean, they're generally a part of itinerant staff that generally always have a master's in a health field in that element, and they have a funding ability with a larger, that smaller group and property tax base to do that. And so a contraction of those things, we don't have a lot of flexibility to do. Think our, right now, our best flexibility are some things that we have contractually with people that may want to be considering making that jump to a master's of social work from a bachelor's degree. That's the thing that Connie and myself and, and, uh, Kirsten, uh, met today and talked about some of those kind of opportunities and things that, can we maybe grow some of our own and what are some ways? And again, in the budget, there were some different funding for programs and such of that. So, you know, we're going to have to look at it from that standpoint, and, and when they're a part of that bargaining group is created by, you know, by law, that's, that's what we have to negotiate with, so.
Are there any incentives through the state that are encouraging work?
There, there are, but it's more going into the programs, you know, the bachelor degree, you know, tuition reimbursement, some of that, and we do have some of that built in that, you know, but we probably need to find some ways to target a little bit more, um, some people that have bachelor degrees in human services to get that, and, and are there some positions that we can have within our district, maybe that don't require, quaid all that, but they can't provide some of the services, but can we rely on the ISD? I can promise you, we're, we're literally, I, I talked with Connie and, and feel free, Connie, anything I'm missing, but we talked today about, are there any different out of the box thoughts that we can have, and we're going to explore every single one of America, but we, we recognize that, that, that's hard.
That's bummer. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, so tenure contracts, we do have some, so I'll pass off to Connie Taylor to talk a little bit about those.
Yeah, we have several staff members who've completed the statutory requirements to attain tenure in the state of Michigan. This first group were either those individuals who've completed the five-year probationary period or for individuals who came to us previously tenured in another district, they've completed a two-year probationary period. And those individuals are Rachel Fernandez, Emily Fetters, Kirsten Litzma, Mary, Beth Myers, as we know her, Timothy Reiman, Vida Rugero, Erin Smith, and Alexandra Trillet. And then we have those individuals who have completed a four-year probationary period. The fifth year is waived due to multiple or consecutive years of highly effective ratings. And those individuals are Leslie Anderson, Kelly Botkin, Emily Brinkman, Brooke Costella, Kathleen Ferguson, Lynn Freeman, Chelsea Gilpin, Colin Hall, Maggie Harrod Birch, Kimberly Howey, Kimberly Calderhouse, Danielle Oster, and Susan Ross Kelly. So we congratulate them on this achievement and their careers.
And can you tell me how they come across with the, um, highly effective ratings? Can you explain that process?
So for staff members at their year-end evaluation, currently we have multiple rating system. The highly effective is the, is the highest that they can achieve, and then there's effective, minimally effective, and ineffective. So for those staff members who have, um, consecutive years of highly effective, are able to waive that final year of probation.
And we have a very specific state mandated tool of rubrics that identify what those items are that they're evaluated on.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, a couple other things want to let you know, district highlights. So, uh, our Compass Strategic Plan is moving along well, and so in all of our committee meetings, uh, a couple weeks ago for this month, we had the opportunity to explore and cover all of the items within that and all of the objectives for the goals that the board's created. Um, that is also posted to our website, so, uh, um, you can get on our website and easily find, you can type right in Compass Strategic Plan. Um, it's right, there's a, um, a component right on our website of a button to be able to go to that, and so that is updated with all of the information of where we're at. And I know that in some of the, I'm sure some of the reports of the board from committee meetings that some of that'll get covered. Uh, but again, for, to keep an eye on that, the public can go to our website and be able to see exactly what we're at, uh, doing and the, and the goals that we have and objectives and progress on those objectives. And, uh, again, uh, I would, uh, be happy to answer any questions anybody has. They can feel free to contact me, um, or any of our, our, uh, lead administrators, part of our executive team on those areas, and, uh, happy with a lot of progress we're making, a lot going this summer with a lot of different initiatives across the board, and so, uh, we'll continue to update that as we continue to work and, uh, excited to implement some of the things in the fall as, uh, we get rolling, so.
And just, uh, an update for the community, is it is a live document?
That is correct.
So as you go in, it can change as-
It is a living document as we go. That is correct. That is correct.
And I think, you know, with the way we did it in committee meetings, the way we did it that way, there was, I think, we would have loved to have done it at a full board meeting, but there's hours of updates, so we had to break it up into the committee structure, but it is all online. Highly encourage it because it is quite impressive. I think, uh, you know, I get asked frequently about what happened about that, like, we've just put it aside, quite the opposite. It's a massive part of what we're doing right now, so.
And that is interactive. You can click on certain areas, be able to see that, and so, uh, so we'll can, but we'll continue to update that as we continue the work. And then also, one other thing I have some-
He's still going. Please, go ahead. Oh, it was unrelated, so. I, I, um, free and reduced lunch, and we mentioned the budget, and I think that was part of the budget. Just, so everyone in the district has to, should be filling out that free and reduced lunch.
Yes, that is key. So Christine, you want, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, um, the, this is a little bit different than the COVID free lunch, so this is state-funded. So basically, the state is making up the difference of what we're receiving from the federal government. So that means those forms are still required for the federal government subsidy. Um, so we are still encouraging people to fill it out. Um, one of the things that, um, I know Tom's going to work with Ginger to create the new form and the, uh, main letter that goes with it, but we're encouraging people to fill it out because it will help, I think, moving forward, prove the need for all free. Um, so sometimes people don't necessarily fill it out for a lot of reasons, but we try to explain that it helps with grants, um, acquiring grants at the district level, and I think moving forward, it will help justify the need moving forward to continue that. So, um, yes, it's still needed. We'll get a federal subsidy and then basically the state will offset the difference of that, so it'll be funded by state and federal funds.
So even if we've not qualified in the past, we should still fill it out?
Yes.
Yes, that will, and it will help us in that aspect. Good cap. Thank you. Um, so I, I did ask Ginger to, um, talk a little bit about some of our social media statistics. It was brought up in committee and there was some questions, and so I'm going to pass it over to Ginger to talk a little bit about that.
Great. Social media analytics is actually kind of a very intriguing, um, point of data to look at. So every year at the end of June, we do take a look at all of our social media numbers and take a look at them in comparison to the prior year. Uh, since I've been here, we've seen nothing but growth in all of our forms of social media, so it is exciting to see that it can continue to still grow and that it has not by any means stalled. So, uh, for Facebook, we definitely have seen an increase. We had a 59% increase in our reach with a reach total of 415,000 plus this year. Uh, what's interesting was to see the, this, the height in jump- What's interesting was to see the this, the height in jump for the public of ages 60 to 65 females. So we're starting to understand that a lot of grandparents are probably following their grandchild's school or helping parents make decisions in terms of availability of programs for their kids. So that was a really neat, interesting spike that we had not seen in prior years. As for Instagram, we did see a 113% increase year over year this year on our new page likes and a 29% increase overall on our reach. This target audience is definitely our younger elementary aged families and families looking for information on preschool, junior kindergarten, and kindergarten. TCAP's Twitter, that is basically more of a business based idea. So it is definitely our smallest following. We have just under 1,500 followers on that. Our website had nearly 770,000 visits with a total of over 1.6 million views. What that means to us is that when someone goes to our website, they can find the page they're going to in two point some clicks, which is what we always hope to attain. You don't want people diving through a website for 15 pages to find the lunch menu. So that was a good number to see as well. It also let us know that social media provided 16,000 visits to our website, meaning that through Facebook, mainly Facebook and Instagram, people would then click the links to access TCAP.net. So seeing some really good results with that and we'll keep you updated next year to see if it's grown even more.
Any questions on that?
Good job. Yeah, that's a, that's a lot of clicks.
Yeah, it's a lot of clicks.
Lot of interest.
That's why it's it's fun, it's fun to see the numbers.
Few of the reminders, the Sunshine Bus, if you've had the chance to see that initiative, great article in the front page of the Record Eagle. Kudos to Ginger, all her team, Katie Cubish and Karen, all of our team, a part of our student support network, what they're doing. That is a program for free food and basic needs where the food, those things will be delivered around the district all summer. Through September 1st, the program is for all kids 18 and under. Wednesday's schedule is Traverse Heights from 12:30 to 1:30, Agme Town Hall parking lot, 2 to 3. Thursday is Meadowlands Mobile Park, 11:45 to 12:15, Blair Elementary, 12:30 to 1, Interlock and Plaza Parking Lot, 2 to 3. And Fridays, King's Court Mobile Parking Home, 11:45 to 12:15, Trade Winds Terrence Apartments, 12:30 to 1:30, and Silver Shores Mobile Park Home, 2 to 3. Food is provided by the Father Fred Foundation, our partner, and basic needs are provided by the TCAP Student Support Network. Any student in need who cannot access a location above for assistance this summer can email our SSN Coordinator, Katie Cubish, at K U B E S H C A at TCAP.net. Also, TCAP's Junior Kindergarten now is district wide. To provide equitable programming across our district, TCAP's has expanded our junior kindergarten program to all traditional elementary schools. So that the only one that doesn't have that is Montessori. The program is in the first year of a two year kindergarten experience. Families who do not yet registered for kindergarten or junior kindergarten can be been, begin that process on our district website. So they can go right there and get that process started. And if they have any issues, they can call our office and we'll be happy to walk them through that. Also, open interview dates hosted at the Tompkins Board Administration Center on 412 Webster Street, where we're at now. TCAP's hiring events offer opportunities to interview onsite, no appointment is necessary. Interested applicants may simply stop in during one of the designated days and times. Many position posted require no prior experience and on the job training. We have those on Tuesday, January, July 11th, 2023, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Wednesday, July 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Wednesday, August 16th, from 3:00 to 5:00, and Thursday, August 31st, from 8:00 to 10:00. Again, looking for people all across the the areas that we have, bus driving, facilities operations, food service, teaching, social work for sure, mental health services. Across the board, we have many, many opportunities. And if you're interested in working with kids, a great system, great benefits, we'd love to talk to you. Please get in contact with us. If you can't make it one of those days, please call and we'll get something set up to sit and talk to you. So that is all I have for my report this evening.
I just have a quick question on the junior kindergarten. When do you start to see most parents signing up for that? And have you seen some good numbers?
We have, we have. I think we've seen an increase from that standpoint. I'd say Christine and Ginger, you know it as well.
Yeah, I think for the most part, because it's new to all buildings, it's been a little bit slow to some of the buildings that haven't had it. So we might see a little bit of a shift in August, mid to late August. I think the students are probably already enrolled. It's a matter of if they get the information and determine their child may not be ready for kindergarten and they know this other option, they may switch. But I think a lot of the enrollments happened right as soon as we released all the information. And the numbers have just been growing.
I'd be curious, once we start the school year, to have maybe a report back as to if we got more kids just because so many different buildings versus, I think it was four last year. So was it four, four buildings at the junior kindergarten? So just curiosity.
Does Montessori plan to start one in the future or is that?
The makeup of their building, they kind of provide it already, they just call it preschool. So the makeup of their building, they have first, second, and third grade together, and they have preschool and kindergarten together. So they're they're somewhat doing it already because they're providing pre-K K with kindergarten instruction as well. So it's inherently already existing as part of their curriculum.
Multi-year age groups.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions. We'll move on to Board Committee Report Outs. First up, Board Curriculum Committee, reporting out by Trustee Humphries.
Yes, so the Curriculum Committee met on June 26th, called to order at 4:00 p.m. Trustees in attendance were myself, Beth Pack, Holly Byrd. There was no public comment. The meeting minutes from May 30th remained as posted without any updates. There was no update to the district course catalog, but stay tuned, lots are coming. We did have a discussion about cell phone policy 5136. Jesse Houghton at Central High School and Joe Esper at West Senior High, the principals there were on hand to discuss how their campuses handle cell phones. And we are discussing that policy later this evening on Agenda Item 9D. So I won't go into any further discussion about that. We got an update on our campus, our compass strategic plan from Kristin Pekowski and her team. We're meeting goals and objectives. I encourage everyone to visit the TCAP's website and watch the curriculum meeting that was recorded that day from June 26th. It's about at timestamp mark 57, if you want to see the updates on the strategic plan. We had an overview of the professional development calendar with, for the district from Kirsten Jones Morgan and Heidi Skodek. They've got some good PD opportunities planned to help move the strategic plan forward. That conversation begins at around timestamp 1 hour 14 minutes 51 seconds. And then next item, we got a curriculum and instruction year end update from Kristin Pekowski. Started with a word cloud that she had asked, I think, the administrators to give two or three words or phrases throughout the year that they were proud and encouraged by some of the words that were part of that word cloud were like staff, they were thankful and proud of their staff, collaboration, growth, expanded offerings, instructional priorities, and boosted staff morale, just to name a few. Through that report, it's very obvious that Dr. Wagner, Dr. Van Wagner and the executive team are working hard to unify and synchronize our district in curriculum, scheduling, administration, and policy with the compass strategic plan being the guiding force. That conversation takes place at timestamp around 1 hour and 28 minutes. We adjourned at 5:37. Next meeting is Monday, July 31st at 4:00 p.m. in this room. Thank you.
Wasn't burger also like a large part of that word, Sal?
Baby burger.
Yeah, that was baby burger.
Yeah. I thought Jay would still be here, so I didn't want to bring that up.
All right, any other questions? Moving on to Board Finance and Operations, reporting out by Trustee Raymond.
All right, the Board Finance and Operation Committee met on June 28th at 4:30 p.m. We started the meeting with public comment, which there was none. We then had a conference call with our audit firm. Hard to believe we're in audit season already, but this was a preliminary call where they kind of went over some step or some field work, prep, field work that they'll be doing. They will be onsite July 31st to August 10th, and they are planning to present on November 13th. We then moved on to procedural items where we kept the committee meetings, committee meeting minutes from May 31st as presented. And then we moved on to informational items. The first item was a bus purchase. We didn't have all of the information needed, so it's actually going to be a discussion item this evening. But basically, we're trying to get in before there's a 2% price increase for for five buses. We then had a capital project update. There are several projects going on in the district right now. I hope I got them all. The West High School Athletic Fields, the Central and West High School Turf Fields, the Traverse Heights and the, at Traverse Heights, there's the North Ed portion of their building and the main office portion has started. We are working on the West High School weight room and the clinic at West Middle School. And I I hope again.
And transportation.
And the transportation, yeah. Vice President Humphries set the bar, I did not look for timestamps, so I apologize. We then moved on to the compass strategic plan update. So as has been mentioned several times, we went through the strategic planning update at all the committee meetings this month. A really great conversation. We talked about continuous improvement for facilities, working on some lean concepts. There's work being done by a consultant, Shannon Flumermelt, Flumermelt?
Flumerfelt.
Flumerfelt? Sorry. Just, just standardizing everything in buildings throughout the district so that it's not taking extra time, extra money. If we have a standard, it usually is more efficient, costs less. We then moved on to pre-bond planning, talking about the timeline, discussed several of the assessments and the surveys, and then discussed our, the board retreat that will be happening on August 16th, where we'll review all of the information from those surveys. We then moved on to, and this is all part of the compass strategic plan update. We then moved on to performance management. So if you recall, we had a presentation from Train probably 12 to 16 months ago. That has not fallen aside, that is still very much alive. But we are working, continuing to work with Train, really just on conservation, energy conservation and infrastructure improvements. So more to come with that, again, part of the can, the strategic planning updates. We then moved on to the property offers. Those are going to be discussed this evening. We discussed them a little bit during the committee meeting, and again, we'll talk more later. And then we discussed the finance update, which Dr. Van Wagner mentioned. The state had just passed the budget, I think, like 20 minutes before this meeting, before our committee meeting started. So not a whole lot of detail provided at the committee meeting, but more detail given tonight. So there were no other items and we adjourned at 5:58. Our next meeting is August 2nd at 4:30.
All right, thank you. Any questions? I've got a couple of report outs, one of which I'll give a very brief overview, but accept any other questions because I was not in attendance, but it was technically a board executive committee meeting which was held on June 26th at the City of Traverse City Government Center. In attendance was trustees Pack, Ballinger, and Byrd. And it was to talk specifically to the City of Traverse City about SRO. And, yeah, we have received a three year grant from the state of Michigan to 50% fund one SRO position. And it was a discussion with the Traverse, City of Traverse City. And basically, and I will do a very summary and then I'll open up to you two, which was, there was a lot of questions about how it would be implemented, some of the concerns specifically with the BIPOC community and previous issues of trauma in that area, how it would be handled, who it would be reporting to, some very general questions, but things that I think we're working through and was a good process and and has been followed up as well in the media. So with that, I open up to the trustees who are actually at the meeting to add anything if you would like.
I think that generally, actually, most of the questions were from the city commission itself, but we we added our, I think, our support for the position and just a lot of it was questions about how it would work, the oversight, as you mentioned, the training in specific about particular issues that our schools have. And I felt pretty good about, you know, what the captain and the, and Chief O'Brien brought to us. So, yeah, it was a, it was a good discussion.
I would also like to thank Jesse Houghton, who showed up, the principal of Central, because her discussion of what it meant to have that kind of officer in the school and how helpful it was, I think, was very, very useful. And so I think that really was, for me, that was the highlight of the program. And then some discussion about what the reporting system would look like with the officer.
So thank you for attending that. And then reporting out on June 29th as well. Hold on a second, sorry, here you go. Reporting out on June 29th, we called the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. We did approve or the procedural items with the annual memberships, rejoining the MASB and the Michigan High School Athletics Association. And when we went in some informational items, which I'm going to skip quite a few because they have been covered in in detail in some other reports. But we did have a staffing update on the West Middle School Assistant Principal Position. Discussion on critical shortage areas, the only thing one that, we've covered a lot of mental health, but obviously, bus drivers are still something that we're looking to recruit heavily in. We did have a communications update and there's now some yard signs you'll be seeing. I have one in my yard, basically encouraging people either specific to schools or TCAPs in general to ask questions and just advertise the strengths of TCAPs. Although I am skipping a lot of things, I do want to, I can't skip the Sunshine Bus again. I think that's a fantastic program and just the the level of, the amount of people using it shows the dramatic need that we have in the community. So that, I believe, is is one of the most influential things we have, we can do this summer. It's an amazing program. We were in the Cherry Fest Parade on July 8th, so I was unable to see it, but that is always a fun. I have been in a parade before and it is a great time. And then we had a very detail on the compass strategic plan updated again, which we really focused on attracting, recruiting, retaining diverse and robust employee workforce and implements, implement strategies to attract and retain students, leading to sustainable enrollment, and analyze and improve communication systems to establish a culture of collaboration and transparency, and engage and collaborate with the community to address resources to the district, leading to district, to student success. So we adjourned at 9:49. The next board meeting, or the next board executive committee meeting is Thursday, August 3rd at 9:00 a.m. in this room. Any questions on that? Moving on to board office hours, I thank all my trustees for covering me for the summer. Life in the hospitality industry is not friendly at this point. And I have been scheduled to do some office hours that I have been last minute unable to attend. So I've given up trying until after summer. I will be definitely doing board office hours, but thankfully, had a few trustees step in. So June 22nd, reporting out by trustee Byrd.
Yes, was at the Horizon Bookstore, second level, from 6:00 to 7:00, and had two people show up. Ms. Rossi, who had concerns that we've, we've heard in our emails about the snow removal at Central Grade School, and had a, you know, pretty long conversation with her and mentioned that I would relay some of that to our administration. And then as well, we had a visit from Natalie, who is here, lives here in the neighborhood, about her concerns with what's going to happen with this building and wanting to keep the character of the neighborhood as it was. So her vote was for keeping the character of the school. um, as it was. So, uh, her vote was for, um, keeping the character of the school and, um, perhaps doing some restorative work. I think it would support the, the idea of the, um, sort of the demolition that keeps the character, but, um, fixes it where it needs to, to fix and maybe adding some elements that are reflective of the neighborhood. So, and that was it. Um, on July 27th, I believe, Mr. Raymond, trustee Raymond, excuse me, um, attended that one.
Not yet.
I will.
Well.
I haven't, I haven't invented a time.
I just got back from Bliss Fest. In my, in my defense.
So the next board office hours is July, uh, 27th and trustee Raymond will be attending six to seven Horizon in the upper level. So, all right. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent calendar as presented and without discussion.
Aye.
Trustee Byrd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item, which is the public hearing on sexual education. Um, as president of the board, I declare this public hearing open to the public. The additions and revisions of the sex education curriculum will be the subject of this hearing. Deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, so, uh, we will have, uh, um, Dan come up and, uh, again, Dan McGee, he is our, uh, director of, for the program of, uh, sex education curriculum. He is a, uh, physical and health education teacher at Central High School, um, long time and has done great work with this and, and, uh, working with the committee. And so we had the chance to see this, uh, before. Um, and by law, we have to have two public hearings and, uh, in different board meetings, uh, to make sure we comply with the state law for sex education. Um, and so, uh, Dan's here, again, just to review and one last time in case there's any questions. And then again, we would take any, uh, public comments. Um, and then, uh, it is our recommendation that the board, uh, move forward with it as a discussion item after this. Dan?
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, again, I presented this at board curriculum. I presented it last month at the full board, so I won't do a lot of talking. We've, we've seen this. It's been online for everyone. Uh, we're asking for a number of items to be approved, so I'll, I'll highlight those items. So the, the first part of this presentation is just a review of, uh, state law. This is not for approval. This is just an educational portion of that. And here's our timeline So the first thing is we're looking at our bylaws. We review our bylaws. You'll see that in our, in this review that we review them as a committee and then we've, we've asked for a few changes. So this, these following slides are those changes. Yes, here's the role of the sex advisory board. We establish program goals and objectives. We review, we recommend materials and method changes. Those are some of the things we're going to do today. We do evaluate, measure and report. Um, once, uh, every two years, we have those discussions every year in the committee. Um, here's what the membership is, uh, each year, because people, uh, serve for three years. There's a rotational basis. There will be a number of seats available. I'll get that information to Ginger for the application in August. In September, there'll be a date, there'll be a link to the, uh, to how to apply for the people in the community. And there are certain ma, uh, laws that we have to do. We have to have a certain percentage of parents, et cetera, and we can't have too many school employees that are parents and, and whatnot. So we always get more applicants than we have seats available. We have a random drawing out of a hat, making sure we comply Some of the roles of the people, most of these are not changes. And again, we review our bylaws every three years, so we're asking for those bylaws to be approved. In our, in our, uh, discussions for co-chairs, we, uh, we decided as a committee, we're recommending that our co-chairs generally will serve two years, but we wanted to create a situation where a co-chair, uh, we would be adding a co-chair each year as someone came off. So there would always be a, a consistent co-chair from the year prior and then, and the possibility of a new co-chair. So these were the two recommended and approved by our committee. Katie Kubis, who's, will be serving her three year, third year, excuse me, on the committee. Um, she volunteered to, to be a one-year co-chair and Ian would be in his second year and he, he, uh, he has agreed to be a co-chair for the following two years. So we're asking for our co-chairs to be approved. And then we have two, um, two areas of, of high school curriculum we're asking to be approved. So we, last year had contraception approved, but the area we did not have finished for that was fertility awareness. So that's what we're, uh, asking to add. It will be taught in that part of the unit and, uh, at the beginning of the contraception. So here And our, our slides are to present information to students, but it also prompts really good class discussion over the topics. So they get a little deeper understanding. Uh, the, the next one we're asking for is, uh, our sex in the law. We've made a few changes. I've indicated on the slides the changes with a gold star. So this one was just graphics, Here we added a lot more detail about the date rape drugs.
I have a couple, and I'm not sure if this is off or on. Um, so I'll just holler. Um, I was looking for a written report, uh, that said that every two years y'all put together a report. And I asked Dr. Van Wagner about it and I think he got back to you and then, yes. And it seems that you only do a verbal report.
We've, we've discussed it in the past, i- in our committee. Each year, we've just never done, presented the report. So I compiled the report based on our discussions and I can come back and present that to the full board if you'd like.
Well, uh, or just to have it available if it is something that, that you say is going to be presented to parents or available.
Yeah, so I can send that to Ginger and that can be.
Just, it's a technicality.
Yeah.
And then I looked through the data that you, uh, had linkages for, and I thought it was very interesting that the state of Michigan and what they call fertility rates, which I believe are actually live births, they talk about the age of the mother and they do it as a 15 to 19-year-old category. And according to the rape information, it seems to me that that 15 and 16 may need to be taken out and done separately.
One of the difficult things is with our data, we're, that we're using, we don't control the data.
No, you don't.
And there are limitations based on how they categorize it. I can't, I can't make the state say, oh, we're going to break this down differently.
I understand.
Some things get broken down by county. Sometimes we don't even get it by age by county. So yes, we're always looking for a better way. So if you find a better resource for us or anyone, I welcome that.
What I would do is I would advocate to the state that they strongly delineate according to the definitions that they have. And that would be an educational thing as well. Um, that there are probably several things and, you know, how you target your program, but yet the data is just totally separate from it.
The data is just a difficult thing because no data, we have no data that aligns exactly with our curriculum available to us. It, it isn't. I mean, even, it, it never has. If we have, if we had only our school age kids only in Grand Traverse County, it still doesn't 100% reflect on our curriculum for various reasons. One, all students in the, in our age, in that age group in Grand Traverse County do not attend TCAPS.
Right.
Everyone in TCAPS does not take this class.
Correct.
Uh, we have students outside of Grand Traverse County. So, yeah, we, we can only use the data that gives us long, you know, projections and, and shows trends. And, and if, if anyone has better resources, I'd love to have them.
I guess my point is not so much that, that you need to find better resources, although there may be some.
That's, that's why I'm welcoming you to, or anyone else to give them to me.
But it seems that it's a great opportunity to be proactive and, uh, help the state perhaps, uh, fine tune some of their data to be more supportive to your program. If you're actually focusing your program to achieve something.
Yeah.
So that would just be my point.
I'll reach out to the state and we'll, we'll see what we get.
Just a curiosity.
Yeah.
If you need help, I'd be glad to help you. I've worked with Tennessee and.
Awesome.
Few other places, so.
Good deal. I, I, it would be great if we had something that could split more specifically reflect.
And, and actually give you something to target and then to involve the kids with.
Yeah. And we do have, um, part of our, uh, one of our sub.
On the committee last year, was, was starting to develop a student cert, so the students that actually participate in our program would give us some data. So that would be specific to the students we know we have.
Yeah. So it makes it more interactive.
Yeah, very good.
All right. Any other questions? All right. At this time, the board would like to invite comments from the public. Is there anyone that would like to provide comments? All right. You can approach. Yep.
Bill, Bill.
Bill, you want to hold on? We need to change the batteries quick, if you're okay? We'll start your time over.
Okay, thank you. Bill Weisner, Traverse City, and, uh, there's a lot of data showing the harms of this. There's a lot of data out about Kinsey. Kinsey, Indiana Legislature refused to, uh, give money again to, um, the Kinsey Institute because it's fraudulent data. And that's what everything comprehensive sex is based on. And, uh, same thing in Texas. They changed their laws about pornography in the schools, uh, based on a movie that was shown, and we hope to show it up here too, to a lot of people down there. Um, so back on page, uh, three, the false core philosophies upon which CSE, comprehensive sex ed programs, uh, showing that they're harmful to children. Children are naturally sexual from birth is what they say. Therefore, any restrictions on sexual expression or sexual activity violates their sexual rights. And, uh, going on, children have a right to experiment with diverse sexual identities and orientations, um, and the behaviors associated with them in order to develop a healthy sexuality. Um, they have that right. That's what they're talking. Pedophilia is now, that's such a harsh name, just like, uh, um, sodomy was a harsh name. They changed it to homosexuality. They changed it to gay now. Now they're changing pedophilia to MAPS, minor attracted persons. And, uh, that movie on, at the theaters right now is being well-received, The Sound of Freedom. It's about child trafficking. Child trafficking is sexual, you know, the sexuality just flooding our culture, tears down countries. And the simple solution is Genesis 127. So God created man in his own image. In the image of God, he created him, male and female, he created them. That's, that's everything right there. And I'm going to have to skip on here. Back to the Kinsey, table 34, here's his data. That's what this is based on. Four-year-old had 26 orgasms in 24 hours. And 87% of Kinsey's people he interviewed were sex addicts, homosexuals, criminals, rape, rapist prostitutes, pedophiles and prisoners. It wasn't accurate data. Who is involved with CSE? You can read that on there. Um, and the last one again, um, looking at CSE compared to abstinence, compared to biblical purity, purity. The origin, CSE is man-made or, um, biblical, uh, I'm out of time, but please read it, consider it. Don't vote for it in the future. Thank you.
All right. Is there any more public comments? All right. Hearing, hearing no comments, I declare this public hearing closed. We are moving on to the next, uh, agenda item, which is our discussion. The first item on the agenda is sex education curriculum. Is there any discussion?
Um, just quick, I, I'd like to express my appreciation to Mr. McGee and all of the members of the committee for their, uh, um, attention for, towards this very important topic. Um, I'm sure you do so very respectfully and dign, in a dignified way. So very much appreciated. Thank you.
One other comment, just to clarify. Uh, Mr. McGee as well, I just want to clarify and make sure with the law, there is an opt-out form that's available for any parent that wants to opt out, correct? And that's available on our website. And that's available on our website?
Every, every parent notification that goes home, the opt-out is on there. So when the parent gets notified that their child sex education is going to be taught, the opt-out is on every parent, parent form, every parent letter.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I just want to say thank you too. I know there's a lot of people on that committee, a lot of, from all sides of the board, um, and a lot of information, a lot of professionals, doctors, physicians, clergy, um, who put a lot of work into that. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the sex education curriculum for implementation beginning in the 2023, 2024 school year.
I second.
All right. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item, school safety update, phone to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay. Um, you know, probably the biggest thing here is that we did have that meeting indeed with the city council on school resource officer. I've not heard anything back. I did, I was watching the news last night. I didn't see on their agenda, but I have not had the chance to see the agenda itself. I don't know if anybody else has by chance. Um, so I don't know where the status is. I have to check in with the city manager, interim city manager to see where the council is on that. I do have a little bit of worry that we do have to notify the state of that officer being hired by the first of August, I believe it was. If I'm right, there is a little ability for us to say that we have a little flexibility if we notify the state, but we have to give them a date that is imminent. So a little worried about that, but I'm going to try and chase that down here the next couple of days and see where that's at. So if any, if you do by chance, or any whispers or anything of where that is, would love to know. But, uh, I thought the conversation was good. Thank you to the board members that came, I think, as well as Patrick, our school safety, uh, coordinator, Jesse as well, um, all of our staff that participated, Kristen. I think we had a really good dialogue, really good conversation. I think everybody made the conversation better. And, uh, I'm hopeful and, and I know that they'll have their conversation and we'll see where that moves forward. Again, we have an interim chief of police as well. So, uh, you know, I do know they have some procedures, again, contractually and things with their officers. So keep the board updated as that goes. Again, we have lots of different, um, things. Travis Heights, the new safety and security front entrances, had the chance to walk through that today. What an amazing difference that is for that front, um, as well, protocol wise. But, uh, just continuing to work, we are, um, doing some other safety and security, um, drills for central office specifically soon. So with some first runs of some things we've not ever done. So staying, you know, to challenge ourselves a little bit to see what some of those things will look like. So Patrick's doing a nice job of working with our team of, of looking at how we would respond to certain emergency type situations. So continuing to work on that again, facilities, doors, locks, all those things are continuing to be updated across the district where we can. And, uh, lots of work going on those areas. So that's what I have for you.
All right. Any questions?
Should, should we proactively reach out to the city, uh, before their meeting? Just letting them know that August 1st? I mean, I'm sure you-
They know I did mention it. I will reiterate it again from that standpoint. I mentioned in our meeting, but, um, you know, I, I will do that. I, you know, I think that there's some relation to, I, I think the conversation went well. I don't know that there's anything that's questioned still at this point, you know, from the, the city council. I think our board members had some good thoughts that they've had as well, and there was good dialogue. So I'm kind of expecting it to be on the agenda and further discussion that I do plan on trying to attend if I possibly, at all possible. I'll notify the board as well when that is, if I find out. But again, some of those things, sometimes especially with a lot of interns and folks over there, you might hear before me. So I think it's important that if we do anything collectively that we share and, uh, and I'm hopeful that that happens soon.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to item C, district school bus purchasing, deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
And I'll go ahead and defer it over to Kristi Tabasco.
Yes. So, um, at board finance and operations, we brought forward information about a purchasing program, um, through MSBO for a school bus purchase. So unlike a traditional bid, this satisfies the requirement for a bid. They have a bus purchase program and with the quotes, um, you can see there's, uh, specific information that you can select about a school bus that is generated automatically from the program. And then there are some options that you have to reach out directly to the dealer, um, to get quote information on. At the time, we didn't have any information from the other two companies, just from Hoekstra on those costs. We still don't have that information. I included in your packet just the multiple times that we tried to reach out to them. I think that both Holland and Midwest Transit know that we are pretty much a Hoekstra, um, fleet. And so probably not wanting to take the time to cost those out for us because they're probably assuming that we're going to recommend Hoekstra, which we are. I don't anticipate that those options, um, which are on the last two pages, it starts, uh, dealer options and it goes on with, uh, spare tire, heated windshield and so on. So you can see those costs from Hoekstra. Um, we did not get those costs from Holland and Midwest. We are recommending the purchase of five traditional 77 passenger buses from Hoekstra. And that would be for a total not to exceed 168, 616 per bus. I don't know why I didn't do that total. Sorry about that. The reason we're only recommending five, um, which is different than our standard 10, as you know, as part of our transportation bus watch project, we do believe that the longevity of our school buses is going to exceed the traditional 10 years, based on the fact that we'll be able to take care of them, um, on a monthly basis. So this is kind of part of that new, uh, mentality moving forward that we would have, we have a smaller fleet as it is, but that our buses could last upwards of 13 years instead of the traditional 10. So this would be the first set, if you will, that would be, um, maintained on a monthly basis through the bus wash. As I've shared before, um, it would be the frame, um, the salt impacting the frame. That is one of the things that is a major concern for us and why we haven't kept many past 10 years.
Okay.
On average, how many buses? Do we retire a certain number every year?
You know, um, not necessarily. It depends on the condition of the school bus. We had been for a while purchasing 10 and getting rid of about eight. Because some time ago, about 12 to 14 years ago, we skipped a year or two. And so we never really got up to, we actually have a 10-year cycle. So it just depends on, uh, what's going on with the bus. If there's nothing majorly wrong with it and it doesn't require any operational, um, cost, uh, through the maintenance of the buses, then we would maintain it a little bit longer. We wouldn't expire it just to expire it. It would need some work, more than a thousand dollars worth of work that then we would say it's not recommended to do it this time. We have a new bus coming in, so we'll go ahead and retire it. And that's when we see the most, um, the better cost that we would get for selling it would be when it's more in its prime. I will tell you that the other local, the local school districts are, uh, very fortunate and appreciative of buying our used buses because they are so well taken care of and a lot of them don't have a school bus bond program like we do. So they've been utilized a lot in other school districts. But we don't retire them just to retire them. There'd have to be some money that would have to go into it, which would be an operational general fund expense.
So how do you choose which ones you retire and put up for sale?
It's based on age and mileage first and foremost, and then we would look at the maintenance of it and what would be needed.
And roughly, how many miles do you put on a bus?
Ooh, I don't have a good answer on that.
Got to push close to 200,000.
At least.
For each one?
Yeah. Before it's retired. They do a really good job annually of rotating the buses on routes so that we don't have specific ones that are just getting all the miles. So they do try to rotate them out on an annual basis to, um, to different mileages so we can kind of level that out.
So they get to go to different potholes?
They do. Yeah.
Right.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
One, one last note I'll have on that. In the budget, there was a, a large amount put into transitioning electric fleet. So you might remember, we are putting the conduit and stuff in at transportation for the ability of that. I will tell you, the districts that have done some transition with some of the early ones, um, I read an article in the Detroit Free Press, a lot of them have struggled to keep them on the road. Just they're brand new and, you know, they're about $400,000 a bus, to give you an idea of comparison, compared to the diesel at this point. They're still in such new infancy as far as technology that they're struggling with a lot of maintenance things and not quite right. So I'm hopeful that a few years on these, we probably will apply for at least one to just try and see what that looks like. You know, in, in some infrastructure, we do, uh, have a meeting we're trying to set up right now with, uh, um, with Travis City Light and Power to have a discussion on what a charging station might look like. You might remember, we did purchase a van that, uh, we'll have that also to kind of get in that. But just know right now, they're just, on the bus runs, they're just not quite reliable, um, still at this point. I think they'll continue to get better and better. But if we have an opportunity to grant, we'll dip our toe in it, but we're still, just the amount of miles and everything we put, we're not ready to truly start that transition yet until we really see, I think, some efficiencies in cost go and the, the, just the reliability a little bit stronger. So just want you to know, we're keeping our eye on it, but, um, that, that's really what we're hearing right now, so.
Thank you. That was a question I was going to ask.
Yep.
Cause I couldn't hear the whole thing in the finance committee.
Yep.
And I also saw an article that said something about a fully loaded electric vehicle. You lose 25% of your range, you know? So that too is something to affect.
Like I said, a lot that we're dipping our toe in it, you know, and, and doing some things when we can, but at the same point, we have to have reliability for our fleet. So we're keeping close eyes on it.
I think some of, some of the big difference is going to be between rural routes and, excuse me, city routes because they're, they're better on long range than they are on short.
Well, and it's also the weather. So, you know, we, we've got a, um, school district in Gaylord that has some and they often struggle, um, to even get a charge overnight due to the temperature.
I'm-
We added heaters years ago, right? Two hours?
Pro heaters, yeah.
To avoid that, yeah.
Every bus has them. That's a part of the order.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of five 77 passenger school buses from Hoekstra for a total not to exceed 168,616 each or 843,080 for total. Uh, this does include a 10% contingency.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes. I'd like to know how much money we get when the other ones are sold, Thomas.
We have to, we can't, we have to complete the vote before there's any discussion. Sorry. That was the last one though, right?
Yes.
Okay. So motion carries and feel free to ask the questions after. Now that discussion item was closed out, so. But the, moving on to the next item, which is board policy 5136, cell phones and electronic communication devices. I defer into Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay. So, uh, we did have some conversation in our last board meeting on, um, some presentation. So we did in our curriculum committees, we bring things through the committee, have a pretty robust conversation, I think a lot of data. So it was the, it was really the consensus of the committee that the full board hear all of that information. And also with us tonight, um, I, uh, Kristen Studeman, our new principal at West Middle School is here and Joe Esper, our principal at West High School, um, as well are with us. And so if you have any questions-
And Dan Tysworth.
Oh.
East Middle.
Oh, sorry. Did I see Dan?
Yes.
Sorry, Dan. You were hiding back there. So Dan's here as well with us. And so, uh, um, I think they can give you a lot of feedback and thoughts. You know, they are the ones that lead all of the enforcement of policies with kids and buildings. So I think it's really important to have their voice. I know that there was a lot of, of feedback from board members that that was really nice to have at the committee. And so really meant to be able to have an open discussion on this and thoughts and idea of what's happening now and, and, you know, just to have that conversation. And then again, we will be looking for some direction from the board on how to move forward. And so, um, at this point, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Kristen to, um, again, have the same presentation and conversation we had in curriculum committee and then see where the board wants to lead the discussion from there.
All right. We're going to start off with our current cellphone policy, which was last revised in March of 2011. This, all of this information was reviewed by the secondary administrators and they weighed in with feedback on these slides. The recommendation, if we were keeping these policy as is, which right now does prohibit during instructional hours, although the implementation of this across the district, we certainly have some areas that we could tighten up, would be to, uh, remove what you see as a strike there and add the during instructional hours. So prohibited during instructional hours in the first paragraph. And in the third paragraph, in terms of violations regarding disciplinary action around electronic communication devices, the recommendation would be to say, upon request, students are expected to turn their, their phones over to staff when asked. So again, current policy, the yellow would be the recommendations from the secondary administrators, should we keep the policy 5136 as is. These are our current practices, again, very consistent, certainly areas, like I said, that we would need to tighten up. But in terms of classroom time or, uh, when students are in instructional hours or instructional setting, cell phones are expected to be put away. We did hear about an envelope system that is happening in some of the buildings and this would be a plan to implement that more systemically, uh, to collect those if, uh, students have their devices out, uh, again, to reduce the power struggle with students in front of peers and just, you know, to give them some grace, uh, for the first time. As we know, cell phones are addictive. There is clear research on that as well. In terms of realities in the building, a no cellphone policy would really be some of these things in terms of reduction. So, uh, the students that are recording other students to use it later to video shame students. We've had students who are videotaping teachers or other staff to video shame them as well. And also students that are accessing inappropriate content that is not filtered through the TCAPs securely monitoring system. So obviously on our student laptops, there is a monitoring system, uh, where the overwhelming majority of inappropriate content is captured. That is not the case when students have their own cellphone, uh, plans and are, are on their phones during the school day. This is just a little bit of research that we found in terms of findings around, uh, things like distractions, technology, student performance. So the first one is, uh, where school in England banned mobile phones and test scores of 16-year-olds increased by 6.4%. This was twice as impactful on students that were low achieving students. Another, uh, this was a cellphone policy just in general of US middle and high schools where 85% of schools do not restrict phones during lunch and recess. But 16% of middle schools and 25% of high schools do not restrict phones in the classrooms either. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are just, um, basically research on multitasking, texting and kind of the impact that it has on grades, grade point averages, um, other, um, I guess text messages in terms of the one below, the bottom one was a, where participants were receiving text messages in different increments or different amounts, and those who received the most text messages scored the worst. We all know about social media usage and the educational, psychological and neurological development in terms of research is growing, that it is not inherently good or bad, but that there are serious concerns about mental health related to extreme use of social media. Uh, we know that many of the, and I'm sure the principals can speak to this if you have specific questions. I know having, being directly involved in discipline hearings for the district, that this, this plays a part in many of those, uh, a form of social media, students on social media, students bullying each other on social media. And although some of that may not be happening at school, if it happens outside of school and it comes in first thing in the morning, oftentimes that can mean a principal's day is derailed or an assistant principal's day investigating something that ends up impacting the school day. So these are our peer comparison districts that you see each year when we talk about student achievement results. Uh, these are districts that are similar in demographics and enrollment. And we took a look at all of them so that every single district other than Clarkston at the top has some form at the middle or high school of a phone restriction ban. And you can see there it is varied. Some are certain hours of the day, some are complete, again, away for the day, uh, some are prohibited in certain areas of the building. And again, I just want to point out that our current policy does have us prohibiting it for a portion of the day as well for the instructional hours. This is the, the rest of them. We have more details on each of these. And again, this has been all reviewed by the secondary administrators as well. So the administrators weighed in on just what we felt were some of the challenges with reviewing the policy. Um, timing, transparency and communication in terms of, I know this was initially started from, um, some board office hours and we heard from some families. In terms of what we talked about in the board curriculum committee was just opportunities or times for families, uh, teachers, students, other administrators to weigh in on the policy change and what this might look like. We talked about, uh, various options, uh, could this be just at the middle school? Could this be, you know, reviewed this fall for a January implementation? We talked about a phase in of sixth grade, perhaps phasing in over the next few years, then seventh grade, then eighth grade. Um, so various options, but again, challenges to reviewing this in the summer where families and staff are not at the ready with their cell phones and checking email and being able to weigh in with a survey or give feedback. Just could be, could be a challenge, um, in terms of fast tracking a policy could create more challenges for, for teachers and administrators and, you know, all of us, I guess, in implementing.
Okay, so this time I'd like to invite Joe and Kristen and Dan up here to just sit so we can scream across the room for conversation. But I think, uh, you know, just, uh, you know, give some thoughts or questions you might have. Um, I will tell you that we have tried to reach out and had some difficulty this summer. Forest Hills is going through a superintendent transition. Um, so, uh, you know, their superintendent has left and they have an interim that has just started. And with summer with principals, they're on vacations and gone. Um, I did, I know Joe was trying earlier. Did you have any success at all in conversation?
No, I put a message out to a contact at Forest Hills but didn't hear back.
So did I.
Schedules.
So did I. I reached out.
I've talked to a few other, from the high school level, principals at big schools, uh, Lake Orion, Midland that were on there, Marquette, some of those to get just some details on how they implement. Forest Hills would be interesting though, because at the high school level, they seem to be the ones that went the furthest.
All right, so, I mean, I'm okay to kick off with, with whatever. We've obviously got quite a few issues of timing, which, uh, levels of schools. I'm trying to reach some sort of where we are, I guess, is the first part. So I, I do think time is personally, I guess, our start and then we can pass around. But I do think, um, timing is important. I don't necessarily think, uh, today is the day that we should be passing a policy because my general belief is that there's nothing happening between now and August. And we shouldn't rush a policy today when we have August before even school even starts. So even beyond that, we have to make sure that we do it right, we have it accepted. I do think that it is different with elementary and, and middle as well, that we may be closer to that than high school as well. So I guess that's my concern, but I do think that we said all of that. I do think that we, we should be bold in what we're doing as well because it is a significant problem.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? How do you see middle school and high school as totally different with timing?
Cause I think there's like, for instance, you know, I have a child who's driving. Um, they have to have their, their phone, like that may be very different to a situation where they're getting dropped off and that they're under more control at all times. So like there is different activity and different expectations. I mean, we're dealing with people, some of them are 18 at this point, like it's, I think it maybe not the first, yeah, first couple of grades, but as you get older, it gets significantly more challenging.
Okay, I think I misunderstood then your comments, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, who, yeah?
We heard, uh, from the high school administrators at the curriculum meeting. So Dan and, and, uh, Kristen, can we just kind of hear from you guys?
Yeah, so current policy is, um, we want to align all secondary together six, six 12. So right now the cell phones allowed between classes at lunch, not allowed in the classroom. We also use the envelope system. We don't put the, I think Central High School is the only secondary that has the actual, uh, calculator holders on the wall that they turn them in. So anytime a, uh, student is misusing their cellphone, present the envelope, they put it in the envelope, they fill it out. Uh, if they choose not to, then we usually go through a RTC process. Uh, hopefully they can make a different choice and we don't turn it into a big to do. We would want students to miss class time or school time, um, by escalating the situation. People, as someone said, there's a, you know, an addiction issue with phones and people become very, very possessive of phones. Um, and we want to be cognizant of that. Just my thought about it is, um, this is the part of just being in the district for 25 plus years is, you know, going through policy, that this probably is the most important part as far as timing, transparency and communication. In my mind, like I, I met, I read through specifically the policy I like. It's kind of that Midland policy where it's just powered off, not seen, um, for the school day, right? That's something we can implement in the middle school. There's going to be challenges with it, but at the end of the day, right, we have one third of our kids, uh, don't know the policy either way, right? They're coming in as sixth graders. So we have two thirds that we really have to teach a new policy to. Um, and that, I think that's doable. There'll be some hiccups and there's going to be some growing pains with it. Um, but we as educators know that it's same as any other policy or issue, right? Dress code, things like that, that we have to, there's exceptions, there's kids with medical issues and all that. So I just want to make sure that this is addressed as far as the timing, transparency and communication that during the time of the year, um, is this appropriate to do right now? And if so, you know, we can implement it, the sooner the better, right? Cause we start communication out, the schedule's going to roll over. Kristen and I just met today about communication with our sixth graders coming in. And part of that communication will be, you know, this is one of the highlights. People want to know what is the cellphone policy, so. And similarly to high school, obviously our kids don't drive, but a lot of them, um, I would say the vast majority are participating in extracurricular activities. And I think their parents would want them to have a cellphone, um, at school. So I'm more of an advocate of turned off in your backpack, not seen. In your pockets, not acceptable because then you have earbuds you can use, I guess you could use them in your backpack too. But I, I wouldn't be an advocate of saying no phone. First of all, we can't really, you know, never make a policy you can't enforce, right? So we're not going to search everybody's backpack for phones. Those are my thoughts.
Can I ask, do you guys have lockers?
We do.
Students use them pretty consistently.
Nope, no, no, I would say the vast majority, 95% do not use them. Yep, so that was a post-COVID, uh, pre-post-COVID thing. Um, I believe lockers were not used during COVID, they had their backpacks.
Right.
The schedule has then adjusted, right? Our school's schedule reflects more instructional time because they don't go to their locker. So right now there's four minutes of passing time, um, which has some other benefits, right? Kids not in a hallway for long periods of time, obviously cuts down on many other behavioral issues. So the vast majority just are, have their bag with them the whole day. They don't use lockers.
Another reason for that too is just logistics, because a kid can go straight from, um, class A to class B without having to go back to their locker so that they can get to their next class quicker.
Okay.
I can, I can confirm that entirely. I've asked my kids, they're all, you know, they're at West, but none of them have ever used their lockers. They're like, yeah, we got it assigned. I'm like, well, why don't you put your lunch in there for the day? Well, nobody uses their lockers, mama. They just looked at me like I was crazy, which is much different than when I was a kid and we decorated our lockers, we were so cool.
Yeah, and Beth, a little further clarification, some classes are in different buildings. So, um, a student might have a class in the eighth grade wing and, um, for first period and then has to get to the sixth grade wing or the band room, which are, you know, it's a pretty good distance. So they're changing buildings, they're not going outside, but they're changing, you know, large areas of the school.
Now, do the, do the instruments stay in the band room? If a student brings an instrument to school, where do they put it?
Yeah, they do have band lockers, orchestra and band have lockers in the orchestra and band room.
In that area?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, a lot of them take them away. If they play flute, they stick it in their backpack.
Yeah.
Or a piccolo, hey, their back pocket.
Even more so, yeah.
Kristen, I'd like to hear from you guys too. I mean, I think that's my biggest struggle right now is just to hear from our teachers and our administrators, right? We're in a position that is, it's a really tough decision. And, and 50% of whatever decision we make, we're going to make that part of the community upset and 50% will be happy. So, um, so anyway, I would really love to hear from you guys.
Yeah, absolutely. I would echo everything that Dan said. Um, we've been in really tight alignment, um, with East and West middle schools as far as our procedures are concerned. If there was one area in particular that I would highlight as being particularly important, it's that transparency component. Um, to, to get to what you're, what you're speaking to is that this is a difficult decision that impacts a lot of our families. Um, one data point that we can't ignore is that a lot of kids have phones in their hands. And those phones didn't get in their hands without family involvement. So I'm curious as to what needs those phones are meeting for our families. And I'd like to ask them so that we can proactively address those needs. So that even if they don't agree with the decision in the end, they've been part of the conversation. So this can either be a to or with situation. So change could happen to them or it can happen with them. I'd like to bring our families along with us with whatever change we land on. You know, it appears that the data, the research, it all indicates that cell phones don't help the learning environment. So I'd like to, um, help our families to understand that, number one. And then to problem solve around what needs they have, listen to their needs and address those as our, as a school community.
I have a clarifying, clarifying question and then maybe a couple of statements and comments as well. So on the highlighted, your highlighted suggestion, how, how are you defining instruction? I think it was instructional period or instructional time.
Instructional time.
Instructional hours, is that the whole school day or is that class hours?
This is where we would need, this is where we would need some clarity. Because as you saw, all of the ones, uh, the districts that are comparison districts, some were hours of the day. Some were the entire time students were at school, some were when they were sitting in classrooms, it's varied. So when we say instructional hours, we would need that in our administrative guidelines to clarify what that means.
Okay. So I, I mean, to me, there's this, there's a, it sounds like there's a perception that we're taking something away. And I would maybe argue that it's the alternative. We're actually giving something back to the students. We're providing them a more, uh, distraction-free environment. We're encouraging social interactions. We're giving them a more enriching learning environment. So this whole like, we're taking something away thing, I don't think is the correct approach. And that's not really how I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it from the perspective of we're giving something to the students that they currently either, because they're addicted or, you know, whatever, not, are not getting. And I think that the data does point that they're not getting that. Um, and so I do think that we need to do something. Um, I, I really, um, I don't see a reason to wait. You know, I don't, I, I just don't, I think that it's the right thing to do. Um, I don't think we're the first district in the state that would suggest doing this. And I don't think it's overly complicated, honestly. I think that there's, cell phones are a tool, they're a great communication tool. Um, I strongly would suggest that we allow students to have them up to the morning bell. You know, if I have my daughter and they're riding their bikes to school, they might not be driving yet, but I still probably would want to make sure they got to school. Um, if something came up after school, I would probably still want to be able to communicate with them. But if I need to pick them up early from school, I still have to call the school office to get them out of school. Um, it's not like I just text them and they stroll on down to the front door, they still have to get permission to leave class, correct? Um, and so I, you know, I think we're just over complicating it. I really don't see a reason for them to have access while they're on school grounds during the school day.
I, I agree with that. And I, in light of that, um, I did write out a draft policy. And I would recommend, my feeling was away for the day. Leave them at home K through eight. And then, uh, actually encourage all students, if at all possible, leave their cellphone at home. However, if brought to school, students in grades nine through 12 must power down and turn off the devices. And, uh, any headphones and earbuds, all of that needs to be stored. I was thinking in a locker, you know, where you'd pick up at the end of the day. And then for students with Apple Watches, parents would be respectfully requested to set the student watches to something called school time, uh, to limit certain watch features during school hours. And part of the reason I think that this is important, I was telling somebody, you know, if you have two kids and two candy bars, and this is my candy bar, uh, illustration. If you have one kid that leaves your candy bar at home and you have another kid that has a candy bar in their pocket, who will use the first candy bar? It's the kid that has the quickest, easiest access, uh, in most likelihood. And so I think that if you have a cellphone with you, even if you turn it off, sometimes it's very, very difficult not to look at, especially if there's a lull in, in your class. You know, there's something, whether you're changing seats or changing books or something, just that, uh, desire to quickly just check for a text or just check for the last app you were on. Or is there an email that was interesting that just came in? Whereas if it's not there, you'll get used to, I will choose exactly how to use my cellphone. It's, it's not that curiosity, I have to use it.
I think one, I think one, um, point that, um, really stood out to me, and unfortunately I wasn't at curriculum, but I watched it, you know, after the fact, thank you trustees for being there. Um, we have a policy. I mean, the policy states that the phones will not be used during instructional hours, while in the classroom or engaged in a learning environment. That's our policy and from, it's, it's not working. I mean, I know firsthand, um, from my kids that are in high school, it is constant, it is everywhere. Um, and you, I, uh, Ms. Houghton expressed, uh, at the curriculum meeting that so much so that the envelope, um, um, technique wasn't working following COVID. And so they now have implemented this, the calculator packets, uh, because the envelopes aren't working. So I feel like we're not delivering a very clear, um, message. And so when I think about transparency, you know, I, I feel like we're sending kind of mixed messages. And, and, you know, I, I know, you know, I, I've witnessed it and I, I know from the kids that this is, this is happening in the classrooms. And we know, I mean, I don't need to go into the studies and the, you know, all of the facts that are there that it, it is harmful. And going to disciplinary hearings that are, they are, a lot of those hearings are related to behaviors directly related from cellphone use in schools or after school that's brought into the school. So, you know, I'm just trying to figure out from a timing perspective. You know, and, and again, I'm, I'm going to reflect back on like our dress code policy. Like when we roll out our dress code policy, we didn't ask for parent and, and, and we didn't ask for parent in, um, whatever. Input, thank you. You know, we rolled out our policy as to what we'd like to see within TCAPs. And so I, you know, I just don't, you know, I would love to have student voices because I would love for those students to come forward, you know, and actually, um, possibly surprise us as a board as to how distracting it is for them. You know, and so I don't, you know, so anyway, from a timing perspective, I'm just struggling with, you know, I think we do need to make a decision. I don't think we can wait until the fall and then, you know, change at the last minute before our kids are going back to school. This has been a heated discussion in my house personally. And, you know, I think the more time to digest the fact of whatever decisions made, I think, I think needs to happen sooner than later.
What kind of timeline would you guys like to see?
I think it might be different from high school to middle school, but obviously the sooner the better as far as August 1st is ideal. Like if we're not, that would be when things really start moving. A lot of people are back on the building on August 15th, um, orientation, August 27th and 28th. So the August 1st would be ideal if I just pick a date that's best case scenario. I think for middle school, that's what I'm speaking, I think, again, I do think they're, I feel that they're two separate, two separate deals.
Dan, you mean August 1st for having a decision?
Yeah, yeah, having a decision as far as policy goes, August 1st, and then we can roll from there.
Yeah, and I think there's been a lot of talk about trying to have.
Yeah, and I think there's been a lot of talk about trying to have something before a school year starts, and starting with, you know, teaching whatever that expectation is. Going back to that transparency piece, though, the difficult thing is we're sitting here in July having a conversation about this, right? And the root of the issue is undeniable. Cell phones are not good for kids. You won't find studies that say cell phones are good for kids, right? So they're certainly not good for kids' educations, but there's so many facets there. It is kind of a complex issue. Like Kristen pointed out, the phones came from somewhere, right? So when we're talking about all the phones that we're dealing with at school, and any issues that are kind of exacerbated by phones being there, those are phones parents put in their hands and send them to school with, right? So I do think, you know, taking the time to get input from parents and students, one, would probably support some of the things that folks want to do here. But two, it also creates some time for some conversation and some buy-in. And the other interesting thing that comes up when you take time to get that input, is there tends to be a lot of stuff about, little details about implementation that we don't think about, that make it go more smoothly. Versus rolling something out, finding out it's not enforceable, it's, it's not consistent. There's some workaround that seems super simple that we never thought of as adults, that kids figured out in five minutes, right? Because they have a workaround for everything. So, I don't know. August 1st would be ideal, but I don't know, I don't think we have any way to get genuine input in the month of July between now and August 1st, you know?
And this is our last meeting before August 1st?
Right. And the August board meeting that comes later is a little more about the, the bond and what things might be in there.
So I didn't, oh, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, one consideration might be like drafting what you think the policy might be at the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level, you know? And put out like a comment period that goes a little bit into the school year, and even starting it with, having it start on October 1st, but giving some time for some input from staff, and from students, and from parents, about the things they need, or the things they would like to see. And I just think it'd be interesting to quantify that, so.
Yeah. So I certainly did not poll all 9,000 student parents in the district, but the overwhelming majority of parents that I talked to that do provide their, their child or children with phones, told me, if I had a choice, they wouldn't have it during the school day. The only reason they have it is because all their friends have it. And I don't want them to be ostracized from all their friends out of their friend group. And so I think that we, again, it's not that we're taking something away. We're doing a service. We're doing, we're, currently, we're doing a disservice, but I think if we adopt a policy where it's away for the day for at least those seven hours, the students get a better learning environment. And I think the parents, if they could, they would have already done it, but they fall into the same peer pressure that we've fallen into for our whole lives. And so, you know, I, again, I think the perception of taking something away is the incorrect perception. We're giving something back to them that I'm assuming everyone at this table had when we were in school. So again, I think we're just looking at it the wrong way. You know, the U.S. Surgeon General made it very clear that, you know, social media is having a significant mental health and, and just overall health impact on students. And they called on people like us to do something. So I do think we need to do something. I've actually, Beth, I, with all due respect, I like your effort. I think there's a few things in here that, that I dislike. Just, you know, I honestly, I don't care where the students keep their phones during the day. If it's out, the policy, in my opinion, would, I love the manila envelope thing. I think that gives dignity. I think it respects privacy. You know, give them the manila envelopes, say pick it up after school. You're privileged, you know, it's another, it's a, you'll, and if we continue to do that day in day, I get it, it might be a lot for teachers for the first couple of weeks, but if it's consistently enforced, I think the students will realize, hey, they mean what they say they mean, and we need to abide by the policy. You know, students break rules all the, we all break rules all the time, for whatever reason. Sure, will students try to break this rule? Absolutely. But I don't think that's a reason to not have the rule, so.
And I also think other students will support that rule in time. I think that you can, you have this critical mass, that if you have enough students that don't bring their cell phones to school, you know, they will not encourage other people to have them.
I want to just bring in a few elements here and kind of round us, round us forward. I do want to say I do agree with the restriction as well. I think cell phones are, are not good for our kids in school. I also wanted to put out there that yes, I know that they'll, they'll be upset about it. I know a lot of parents will be upset about it, because they, they like the safety and security of being able to contact their child during school hours. And that's where we'll probably see like the most of parents, you know, falling into that sort of thing, like, oh, that, that initial concern. I don't have the same concern. I feel pretty safe about my kids being at school. But the, my question is, and also recognizing that what's working, what you're doing right now isn't working, and I agree with that as well, Erica, because I know with my kids, they're all, everybody's looking at their phones in the back of the classroom, you know, when the teacher's not looking. And the envelope thing isn't really working there either. I think the, the computer sleeve, or the calculator sleeve is, has, seems like the most effective way, or does not having it at school period, or turning it off. But I, knowing that they're carrying around their backpack, it's always accessible. And so that's like another thing to consider. So there's so many variables here in how this works. Unlike the, the school dress policy, which affects one day a year, that we were talking about for that last session, this affects every day. And widespread use, not just by, by kids socially, but also in classes. Some of them do use stuff in class. Teachers, we have to talk about teachers and the teachers aides. So I guess my question is, is, you know, when we talk about transparency, and how do we get that, that, that ownership by parents and students alike to, to answer these questions? What does that look like for you? Is that a simple survey that we can have for a month? I mean, talking about some of those variables.
I was just gonna, just weigh in on, I think, as far as if we want to get policy done, I think there's a feeling if we want to have some policy today, you know, and Joe mentioned some things about, you know, the pitfalls of the policy that we're not thinking about, the workaround that students may have as a K-8 policy, I think, is something that we could put into place pretty quick and pretty simply, as far as unseen, and we can, we can get that done as far as enforcing that day one. I, I think that would be a good idea, and then you do still have some of that transparency and feedback for the high schools you'd get, and we get the tests running a little bit, and help the high schools maybe in a year catch up to where we are. I mean, K-5 is a non-issue. In my mind, there might be some fifth grade right now, you see it in, I was at Westwood's for several years. We had a few cell phones. 6-8 would be a to-do, but we could get it done as far as putting that policy in place away for the day. I'm not a big advocate of the locker. I'm not an advocate of not, of them not having them altogether. I think if we keep that policy somewhat broad as far as away for the day, powered off, before they walk into the building, I know we talked about before and after school, but you have to figure out maybe something there as far as school buses go. Again, I don't know how enforceable that is on a school bus with one to two people with 60-odd kids. However, if they're powered off before they walk into the door, and power on when they walk out of the door, that would be, that would be the simplest. Anything starting in October, after we've already set expectations, is really hard in middle school. Or mid-year, it's going to be harder than it is to do if we just get it done now.
Can I, this goes back to kind of what Scott said. How is it K through eight transparency-wise different than a flat policy K through 12? How is that not including parents and students' voice?
I think it's, and again, I haven't read through all the research, but that developmental issue of the appropriateness of the cellphone with the kid makes more sense, I think, at lower grade. Like if we were to talk about transparency for K-5, to me, it's a no-brainer. Why, why, K-5, why do they need it? In sixth grade, seventh grade, you know, as far as adolescents go, is a, is a pretty quick connection to make with those, with that age level. I think jumping from fifth grade to ninth grade to 18-year-olds who can sign themselves out of school anytime they want is a big jump. And there, and I think there's an aspect of teaching some responsibility. We teach a lot of things in school, obviously, outside of, of the four core, and part of that's being responsible, and part of that's the responsibility of a phone. So I, I think there's a big difference when they, in that high school age group, and you don't want to split the grades, right? We did some brainstorming around, hey, maybe do sixth grade, and then seven and eight, but, you know, a lot of adults don't know who grade, what grade a kid is in, right? And it just creates more confusion, and confusion in the policy means it can't be enforced. So as far as the high school, obviously, I think 11th and 12th would make a little more sense than nine and 10, but again, you just have to make it, I think, school-wide, so.
So Erica, are you looking for K-12 away for the day? Leave them at home? Don't even have them on your?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
No, in a backpack is fine.
Okay.
Just powered off, if you're caught with it. The first offense, second offense, third offense is, is, yeah. And again, I go, I mean, right, this board's been really, really focused on our strategic plan, and, and the goals of our strategic plan, how we set up our strategic plan, and four of our goals, I think, directly correlate to mental health issues, which we know, if you look at the data and the studies that look at our, the mental health, the suicide rates, our direct correlation to social media. You know, again, where we prioritize, right, our strategic plan goals, and we look at just how making a decision, the policy change affects our strategic plan, I think is, is a guiding principle for, for me personally. I'm just trying to differentiate, I mean, I know that there's middle schoolers that have been caught in the cafeteria looking at pornography. Like, we know this is happening. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, how, I just, I don't, it's hard to differentiate, you know, high school kids. I mean, they're not supposed to wear shorts that show their rear ends, and every day I drop my kid off, every day there's kids, where I'm like, holy crap. You know, I get the argument. It's hard. We've talked a lot about dress code, and, and it's just, you know, I always go back to what is best for kids. We know phones are not best for kids. So it's hard, you know, would I love to say, yes, could we do a survey in 30 days and get the parents that are concerned and want to make their voice be heard? They're gonna make their voice be heard. I mean, I, I look at just our bond, and look at what's happened with feedback for issues parents have. They've let us know what it is. So would I love to say, sure, I'd love to get a staff survey, or a parent survey, or a student survey, or all of the above, and compile the data, and come back at our August meeting and make a decision, because it's data-driven. I just don't know how realistic it is with the timing of the year.
Well, I mean, is there a hurt to try? I mean, that's the one question. I mean, I think, you know, hearing the conversation, I think there's a whole lot of consensus on the K-8, that I think the board, I think is very close, just in what I'm overhearing here, as far as, you know, those elements, I think administration's, you know, telling you that. You know, and I think the high school, there are so many parts of the high school that I just think of, you know, we have, how many kids do enroll that aren't even on campus and coming back and forth to, at West?
About 200 at each school.
How many kids career tech?
Close to 200 both schools, yeah.
Yeah, so we got kids coming and going constantly, you know, and, and, and so I'm just, I worry just a little bit, and again, my thing, it can't be done, no. But I just, I do think about the constant, we don't have that many administrators to just, you know, eyes all over and monitor. And, and so are you gonna put that in a position from that standpoint, you know, where is the sleeves the way to go? I don't know. You know, this is a really hard conversation and talk, but if you wanted some feedback, we could at least, you know, we, we have an August meeting, the board could do a special meeting if you want to do, literally August 1st, and we could, you know, we could get some data, you know, we can try and get, we can get. I think there are some things, we're hearing Forest Hills, we're hearing others, we're hearing some things Forest Hills, everything is a peachy. Okay? But we don't know exactly what that is. We really need to get some conversation with their staff to know, okay, well, they're maybe rethinking some things, how would they enforce it at the high school? How would they do some of that? It would be helpful for us to have a little bit more, I think, from the high school range, personally. You know, but I, I think that we have a whole lot of consensus here. Ministers are telling you at the K-8 level, we think we can do this, we think that's there, I think there's a whole lot of consensus there, that I think you can feel good there. And then maybe we do just try and collect some data that we can from our high school folks, while we can right now. We encourage kids, we encourage parents, we'll send something out, see what we get, and then you folks can make a decision on the high school, where you want to go, if you want to make a consistent K-12, or if there's some things you want to think about, or some data that we hear from some of the other schools in the next couple of weeks to kind of have that, that I think you can then maybe make your decision on where you want to go with the 9-12 aspect.
I think one of the things that during our, the curriculum meeting that came up was, this is more, like you said, for the high school, was what if there's an emergency in the school? And I think Josie even mentioned this somehow, like there's a, God forbid, an active shooter, and do kids not have their phones? And that's, like, some parents have brought that up, like, if there's an emergency at the school, my kid doesn't have a phone, how do I get ahold of them? But that's part of the policy that they talked about, like, going over is, okay, who do we allow to have a phone in the room if there's an emergency situation? Or when do, when do kids, are they allowed to open their phone during an emergency situation? Another one was, what about kids who are outside, you know, during school hours, who are doing classwork or doing something? But, you know, what do we do with that? If we're just saying, no, no phones as they hit the school doors, then that kind of, that's another variable. So there were some things that had to be fleshed out.
Which we maybe see a little bit more at the high school. I can't tell you of a situation where I see that at the K-8 level.
Right.
You know, but I do think about our kids in the weight room. Right now, I know, use their, their phones for all of their apps, 800 kids that we have. You know, at least I know what Central does, and West, I think you bought some iPads or something of them, right?
Yeah.
And again, I, I would like a couple of weeks to try and figure out the high school aspect, at least to give you some, as many of those variables as we can, for us to start working through from that standpoint, and let you make the call on that. I, I think there's some consensus from the K-8 level of a, of an away-for-the-day, you know, whether that's in a locker or a backpack, you know, I, I think that there's some consensus there, you know, that it's just, it's not seen, not heard, powered off from when you enter the door until when you leave. I think there are some things when they leave. What about basketball practice after school? And moms texting me to say, hey, I can't pick you up at 5 o'clock, you know, I'll be there at 5:30? You know, are they gonna be able to get it in the gym at 4:30 and use it? These are little things that we as an administration have to figure out. But if we know the, the consensus of the general basis of where the board wants to go, we can begin to work on some of those details. But high school, there are a few of those details that I just feel we need a little bit more time to try and gather some input from some of these other schools. You know, Joe, I know, has talked to Lake Orion that did that, and they've had some struggles, they're trying to rethink some things. Like I say, I really like to, Forest Hills keeps being brought up, and we'd really like to get a little bit more information that we haven't been able to get yet.
I have a question. When can students begin to drive onto campus and leave at lunch?
You can't at lunch.
They can't, they can't leave at lunch, but we have hundreds of kids that leave midday because they go to the college, and we do afternoon career tech. Kind of the break for that is right at lunch.
Not a, not a ninth grader.
Into sophomore year, there's, there's sophomores that drive to campus.
Sophomore. But now Central has open campus.
Correct.
Right, for everybody except freshmen. It's kind of the rule.
So you have open campus, plus CTE, plus.
Right, I love that.
Plus dual enrollment right next door.
And so Kristen, you agree with Dan that day one, you guys could hit, hit the ground running and enforce that policy, feel good about it, and have had conversations with your parents about, you know, this new policy, and you'll feel like it will be able to be transparent, and everything that you would feel good about starting with at day one?
Yeah, I think that we would be able to be in alignment on both sides of town to make sure that we have consistent policy, and that would also give us the opportunity to coach our teachers as well, and make sure our staff is, you know, really clear on what it should look like at the classroom level. Because if we're not consistent at the classroom level, that's just gonna create additional chaos and gray areas, which, which we certainly don't want when we're introducing, you know, tightened expectations at the middle school.
So, I, oh, sorry. Go ahead. I was just gonna say, I mean, I, again, I agree with Erica. I think that we know that the current policy's not working. And personally, I think our education needs to go beyond the classroom during those five-minute breaks between classrooms, or between classes, the whatever, half-hour, 45-minute lunch break. I mean, part of school is that social education as well that you get, and we were all in favor of face-to-face during COVID as much as possible for that exact reason, that students needed that, that interaction. And, you know, thankfully, we're post-COVID now, and I'm gonna go out on a limb, I apologize, you can shoot me down. on a limb, I apologize, you can shoot me down.
You too.
But you asked for clear direction, so here it is, I move to amend policy 5136 cellphones and electronic communication devices to read as follows.
Sorry.
And I'll wait till at least the trustees have it.
Sorry.
And this is now quoting, "The intent of this policy is to enrich the learning environment by reducing external distractions, enhancing student focus and fostering social interactions. Subject to the exceptions noted below, during the educational period, students may not possess or use cellular telephones and/or other electronic communication or gaming devices, including but not limited to netbooks, on school property, including but not limited to buses, school buses, or when off school property for a school sanctioned event and/or field trip. For purposes of this policy, the educational period is defined as the time period from the opening morning bell to the closing afternoon bell on regularly scheduled school days while school is in session. The limitations of this policy do not apply to the following exceptions, when approved and/or directed by instructional staff for educational purposes or when special health-related exceptions are granted by administration. This policy is not intended to restrict the possession of such devices in student lockers for use outside of the educational period or the use of watches or other electronic devices that are not used for cellular communication and/or gaming. Violations of this policy will result in the immediate confiscation of the device, which will be returned after the closing afternoon bell. The student who brings electronic devices onto school property shall assume full responsibility for its or their care. At no time shall the district be responsible for preventing theft, loss or damage to cellular telephones and/or other electronic devices brought onto school property."
I would add that cellphones shouldn't be used to take.
I guess there is, there is a motion on the table, so first of all, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
All right, so there is a second, so now we can have discussion and.
And I, I do think that I tried to address about 99.9% of the comments that were made. I get that, that, I did have initially in there another clause for in the event of an emergency, but I do think that that could get super gray, I think that if there's a real emergency, students are gonna use their phone.
I, I'm gonna mention one thing here and it's kind of unique that it's happening at the moment, I, I would caution the board on a policy and not having legal, take a look before you adopt. Now, oddly enough, Gordon V. Wierens here from TruInLaw, which like never happens, could give you some thoughts on that, I think, you know, not to put on the spot, but like, it would obviously need time to review, like, not gonna be able to read it right now, but Gordon, do you want to step up any thoughts, you know, on that at all that you would want to share?
That was one of my, one of my concerns.
At all school grounds.
Right, K-12.
Thank you, John, I'm a real estate attorney and.
Right.
But I know it's an issue all around the state of Michigan, it's very challenging for boards and for administrators, so I really don't have any comments other than.
Yeah, that's not a, that's not a.
Dr. Van Wagner, I, I made the motion, mostly in the essence of time, I do think if, you know, if you want to get it reviewed and you come back in August and we have to adjust it, great, for whatever, whatever legal, I don't really think there's any different legal in this than what's in our current policy, I actually used a lot of the current policy, you know, but if, if for whatever reason.
And I'm not saying there is, you know.
If for whatever reason we have to revise it in August, that's great, but this gives you another four weeks of time to get the, you know, the word out that this is most likely what's gonna happen for the beginning of school year.
So I guess, I mean, we can start off Beth there, go ahead, you were first.
I think cellphones also should not be used to take unauthorized photos and/or video recordings of students, including selfies, staff or events while on school property, including school buses and during school activities offsite.
So although I don't have an opposition to that, that's one thing I would definitely want legal review on first, what, where the First Amendment limit is.
Quick response, if they are not able to be using their phones or if they're gonna be confiscated, if they're out, they're not gonna have the opportunity to take selfies or otherwise, if they get noticed, it's gonna get confiscated.
Well, I'd like the, the, I too am for a strict revision to our cellphone policy and I'm not opposed to this, but I do want, I liked what Dan said earlier about from the time you enter the school, everything being, being powered down instead of the morning bell and the, the morning bell to start school and then I think there's something in here about the bell at the end of the day from, you know, power it down from, because there's a lot of time kids get there early and they're on their cellphones before the bell rings. So while the, I think there's some things that need to be fleshed out about this and I still, I still think the high school is a variable, I think that we're, we need more information, but I, now the October 1st date, I don't really like, Joe, I would like to start day one, knowing what the policy's gonna be.
Yeah, I would too, but we started the conversation in June, which doesn't blend itself to like.
And going through my, just, yeah, and going through my notes as well, I would, I would want to define possess because we've, we've got differences of possession, is it in the backpack, is that possession, we've, we've heard, my, my general view is I don't want to see or hear a phone, that's really how you guys can apply it because we don't know if it's in a backpack, we don't know if it's in a locker, we don't know where it is, the general gist is, we don't want to see it, we don't want to see you with a phone and we don't want to hear your phone and if that doesn't happen, then most things are okay. It's my personal opinion on that part, so the possess, I feel like has an, has an issue. We define violations with immediate confiscation of the device, which should be returned after the closing afternoon bell, what about continual violations, I mean, that really lowers the threshold of discipline when you're getting five minutes from the last bell, you're gonna lose your phone for five minutes, like, so there's, I, first of all, I also agree that I would actually like to go bolder, a bold policy that may take more time, like, to say, this is what we're gonna do and it's pretty drastic, but allows everyone to come to terms with it and understands, but we have a shorter term and a longer term goal, because I think we're actually all, I think everyone agrees and 95% of parents and even most students will also agree with the goal, it's just getting there and, and those steps and how to implement it. I think, I don't think there's any dispute amongst the board members that we all agree that something should be done that's pretty drastic and I think it's all about timing and which, so I, yeah, I, I do like, I do like a lot of what we're doing, I just don't know about timing.
I tried to make it broad enough, you know, this is our direction and, and implementation of it is up to Dr. Van Wagner and his staff, I mean, there's not a lot of direct, there's not a lot of, you know, clear guidance in this existing policy either, so I tried to make it as broad as possible and, and, you know, again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of what ifs that we could come up with and I don't think that we're gonna be able to answer every single situation and again, I think students are gonna do what they do, the majority of them are gonna abide by whatever policies are in place, you're gonna have a few repeat offenders, you know, do I think that a cellphone, confiscating a cellphone warrants, you know, suspension after four or five, I, no, not, absolutely not, our intent is for them to be in the classroom learning, not, you know, suspending them because they've abused the cellphone policy, so, you know, I mean, I thought that, I personally think that just taking it and if, if you have repeat offenders, you know, if you have to take it every day, you have to take it every day, I mean, there's people that get multiple speeding violations, like people, you know, there's, yeah, I, I think.
You do lose your license eventually though.
It's pretty simple, I mean, I think we're, I really think we're overthinking it, so.
My last comment's gonna be this, is that we can be as heavy-handed as we want to on a policy, but at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to if these guys right here can enforce it and if the teachers in the classroom can enforce it enough to where it's not taking time away from the actual learning, so let's, let's all just keep that in mind. I agree, we are all pretty much in agreement that something drastic has to be done and that cellphones do not, are not good for kids and do not aid in the learning process, but we gotta, we gotta come forward with a policy that can be enforced.
See, I would, I would take your policy, Andrew, and this is still, motion is on the table, and sorry, last thing, I would take your policy, actually tidy up a couple of things with possession violations and really actually maybe even beef it up a little bit more, suggest an implementation date of that, of the next school year, which is gonna upset everyone, but in the meantime, we would also have a tidying up of the current policy and that really allows like the communication message and it's kind of like, I don't know if anyone's else is like me, it's like I commit to all sorts of things in like six months' time, because it's like six months' time and then six months' time rolls around and you're like, oh yeah, that's right, I committed to it and now, so it's kind of like, I've come to terms with that already, so like, we could set the grand vision and do something in between, but there is a motion on the table, so that, any other discussion on the motion?
I do, so I, I want to thank you both for drafting policies and taking the time to really look at this strongly. One thing, Scott, about your policy, I'm sorry, Andrew, about your policy, is that it is confusing when you say students may not possess or use cellular telephones, so I, I know what you were doing was taking the language from this and sort of transposing it, but it, to me, it's gotta be one or the other, so I, I don't think that we can go to saying kids can't possess cellphones at all, that's, that's where I find it problematic, whether they're possessing them, as mentioned down below, in a locker, you know, they are, that is a possession, they're bringing it into the school, so I think there's some confusing language there that contradicts itself and needs to be, you know, so we need to look further into it.
And just one other, as I'm reading through it, I would say our LEAP program is probably like the most, I would, after school, used on cellphones, I mean, I know.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, when you strike on property, but I think.
On property during the educational period.
I think it's, isn't it?
The edu, and the educational period is defined.
Yeah.
At the, closing afternoon bells, that's after.
Okay.
I actually like the timing of the policy, like, I think, I think we're fighting, we can argue about school buses too, but like, I think we're, we have to, it's not, whenever it's on school policy, like, it's very different, like, in the evening active, like, I think it's different then.
But videoing a fight on a school bus might not be real cool.
No, I think that when you talk about, because that is outside of the hours defined, that may have to be added.
And we do allow certain instances where cellphones can be had, which was part of the reason I was just throwing in a blanket, no video, videoing, videoing, as well.
And that, to me, that's something that would come under definitions, so like, the, in a proper policy, we would have a set of definitions that would define all of this stuff.
And generally, that happens in administrative rule, you know, so that's the fine details, you know, which on this one, I'd probably bring back to the board and, you know, if, once we know where the board stands fully, that point, we create the administrative guideline that corresponds to operationally define some of that, make sure that that's what you guys are thinking, that would be the norm.
So, I mean, again, there is a motion on the table, so we can't edit, adjust or anything, we just have to have that conversation, so I think there's some changes, but we can continue the conversation, get closer to where we believe to be, we can vote on this motion, there can be a vote to amend the motion, that'd be a fun thing we haven't had to do for a while.
If you want to amend it, say no, we can amend it.
I think my just issue is, again, defining possession or use is the biggest one for me and then I don't know if doing it now will have, it will be feasible, I think it would be better to have some delay of timing, but I do think that something should happen now and I also agree that this is where we should be going and sooner rather than, as soon as we can get acceptance of it.
Can I give you a recommendation of a thought?
Hmm.
If you're gonna do this in the way that I think you want to do, I do think you should have a committee of the whole meeting, special meeting and sit down with just this, have some time to get this back, you've got a lawyer on the board, you got a lawyer sitting over there to sit and give some, a little bit of time and iron some of this out and bring it back and sit and have the time just for this and get it done and get it done before August 1st, but take that for what you want.
Special meeting.
When is on next?
It's not until August 14th, it's gonna be too late and really, based on what Dan's, and I do agree, I think it's something that you need to do probably in the next two weeks, give us time to get a little bit more details just on some things to learn, just give you feedback, but I think that if you're serious and you want to do it for a timeline to give implementation, I think that's the only way you can do this, I think there's a little bit, just some thinking that needs to happen over, you know, a, a little bit of time here that you're not gonna be able to do clear minded right now with all these thoughts sitting at the table, but I think you can do it within a, a two week period, but you will have to come back together to do it just specifically for this.
Can I, in addition to that comment, can I, can I poll the board and, and see what the individual board members want to do, I mean, so if we're agreeing to K-8.
Well, again, we have three lawyers in the room, so, I, I would defer, you know, that idea of, of, you know, can we, I mean, that's.
I mean, again, we, we do have a motion, that's the.
Yeah, you do have a motion on the table, that's for sure.
Which we, I think personally, there's enough changes for me that we're gonna have to, like, regardless of whether, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not willing to pass as is, so we can have that, just, we have that vote, just so we can have a more open discussion and see, or we can continue the discussion, so if the discussion hasn't naturally ended, so if we want to end it and vote and then have an open discussion, we can.
And just to be clear, we're not allowed to discuss this outside of this meeting, so I did not really share this with anybody prior to.
Very good.
Obviously, I'm, if you're polling, I'm 100% in favor.
So why don't, if, if acceptable to the board, why don't we go ahead and vote specific to the exact wording of this, of this motion and then we can have a, but I think we're going along the right path, so, is that okay with you?
And can the members give an explanation for their vote?
Yeah, yeah, so, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Bird.
Uh, no, for the reasons that it needs to be cleaned up.
Trustee Humphries.
No, for the reasons that it needs to be cleaned up and I also want to explore the K-8, 912.
Thank you. Trustee Newman Bell.
No, for the fact that I think it needs to be cleaned up and I do want to focus on the fact that I would like to have the most bold policy possible that I think needs acceptance from everyone that we don't have yet and I think we all want the same thing.
Trustee Pack.
No, for the same reason that's mentioned with the others, plus it allows our seventh member to join us.
Well, you hope.
We may, we may lose another member.
I'll be honest, a special meeting at this time of the year is difficult, so.
I know it is, I know it is.
But I think it'll be worth it, I mean, honestly, I do, I think it's an important issue.
So I'm happy to open up and.
Officially, the motion doesn't carry.
The motion failed, yep, so happy for revisions, I do think we owe it to administration that if we're, we're intending to do this, I believe in, and I'm not gonna speak for Trustee Ballinger who's not here, but I believe she's in favor of this as well, so I just.
I think we will, I think we will, it's just the timing and the voting.
Yeah, so happy for there to be revisions, I think we owe it to them if, if we are going to do this, that, sooner than later.
So am I safe to, if, am I safe for Megan to take direction to try and schedule something over the next, within two weeks before the end of the month for a special meeting?
I know, I think we can spend a couple more minutes trying to iron out any other guidance because again, we can't have open discussion outside of this area, I think this has been highly beneficial, I think it's highly beneficial to hear everyone, again, from what I'm hearing and, and please speak bluntly, I think we all share a very similar goal of where we want to go, so we should focus on the, having the best policy regardless of every timing, K-48, anything, we should have the best policy and then figure out how we implement that.
Can you give another thought possibility to the process? Another thing we could do is we could have an ad hoc committee of three members to sit down and we could create two policies, right now, one that would do a K-12 across the board the same and then one that would be a K-8 and a 912 and then could present both of those at that special meeting to the board and then hammer out what you want to do.
I feel like it's probably easier to do one.
I mean, I, personally, I feel like the majority of the issues probably are at the high school level, so I, this whole K-8, 912, different policy, in my opinion, doesn't really make a lot of sense, I think we need a, a standard policy in every building across the district, so, and again, I might not be able to make a special meeting, so I'm just clarifying my stance right at this point.
How does the board collectively feel, Flannoy's mentioned, I know that, how does the rest of the board feel on that? Because we could begin to, as a staff even, to try and start drafting something. Cause we could begin to, as a staff even, to try and start drafting something from that standpoint to help at least get you to a point here um, based on the feedback, but I need to know, is it just one or do you want to, that bifurcated kind of thought for us to bring you to?
I feel like ones, one me- one meeting will have a better shot at.
I guess my question is, what do you wa- okay, so uh, one meeting, you're saying?
Hey, you mean K eight versus nine twelve.
So can I ask you both this? Do you want an ad hoc committee to do, you know, a separate, to bring to that special? That's one question, and if, and, and the second question is, is do you want two policies brought, you know, by that committee too? Or do you just want the committee of the whole? And do you want us to bring one or two policies to that committee of the whole? That's.
In my opinion, it sounds like it's a wording issue on nailing down exact policy.
Of a K twelve?
With, with the, the language that everybody feels comfortable with, K twelve.
A wording and messaging.
That's, that's.
Can I get some thoughts, Beth, or is that your thought?
I think that it's a different population. Uh, I think a five-year-old is vastly different from an eighteen-year-old.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I.
Would you want to see two, just to see what it looks like at that special meeting, or would you want us to just try and draft a K twelve?
I wouldn't do it if I'm the only one saying that.
Well, Flannoy's also saying it, and Missed it in her comments.
At this point, I kind of think, you know, what is it? They always said upperclassmen had certain privileges. Um, and those privileges, um, they should be able to, to deal with. Whereas I think a, a younger kid is in a different place.
Holly, I.
You know, I think having more than one to consider is al- always a good thing. I, I mean, I think one group can do what we think is a, a full K through twelve policy and the other can work on the high school policy. And then when we get together, we'll compare them and see what, what works for us. But I, I would like to have input, you know, from the other people in the room as well, so that's, that's um, you know, part of my concern.
Mm-hmm. And even if some of the elementary school teach, um, principals, teachers would to chime in, it, it might be useful.
I don't think elementary is the concern. I mean, I, I personally, I, I don't, just from my own personal experience, um, you know.
Middle school.
K through five, you know, just the use of cell phones isn't, isn't that prob- you know. But I think, um, you know, and I don't disagree that a middle schooler and a high school are different. Um, you know, I just, again, um, I have two high schoolers. I've watched the high, I just.
I think it'd be good to have this a few days.
Want to give them the tools to, to make the right decisions, but they're not making the right decisions. They're not.
Well, I mean, we're all addicts, again.
To be fair, to be fair, the only student that we've heard from was a fifth grader who made public comment at last month's meeting, so. Um, I think to say that it's not a, a K five issue, I mean, we heard directly from a fifth grade student who said it was an issue.
Mm-hmm. It may be easier to implement at that level, but it's still.
Can, i- i- if you want feedback, we'll try and get something I can work with. You know, at this point, I think you're mostly asking for high school, you know, and, and Joe, I think we could work with Jesse to try and put something out, right? Or at least to, you know, maybe your sentence.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get some feedback at that point to give you from that aspect.
And maybe more the message from the board is we have strong intentions to do.
Something.
This, this policy.
This is where it's at.
This is what we, we want to achieve. What are your concerns with it so we can work them into policy? Rather than a general, it's not a general free fall. I mean, it is, but it's like, I think we can make it clear that we all, we all share the intent of that.
High school principals at that point, and then I think, you know.
Convince us not to do.
No, just tell us what the problems are so we can then identify them in the, in like, is it that there's not enough phones in the office and they're gonna have to, like, like what are the concerns, like?
Okay.
We'll put together the best feedback and data we can for you.
Yep.
You know, we'll ask the questions that we think we can, and we'll be perfect in, in week, no. But we'll give you what we can. At least you've had some data, you know, from student voice to, to be able to help in your, in your thoughts.
And we're looking to have that data by when?
Well, it's, we're gonna need it by whenever this special meeting is, that she's got to figure out when board members can do it.
I'm, I'm wondering if it's possible to put out any kind of a, a survey question on social media for our parents? Even if it's just such a small amount of time, but something that they can answer.
Text, right? Text is still, you know, we, we, what we've learned from, from our, um, strategic plan is that parents prefer and, and we, in response element, and we, Ginger, we talked about this the other day. We have a huge response from text message is the number one way that we get feedback from parents.
And that's more directed to parents.
So we, you know, we have a way to be, what our response rate will be in July, I don't know, but we can give you what we can give you.
Okay.
And people that are somewhat ambivalent right now will probably be the ones who do not respond. But then if you give a certain kind of direction, they may be the ones that give you the most reaction and result.
We'll, we'll give you whatever we can get.
I appreciate all of your work already.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the policies and I'm not, I think it was a fantastic tool to get us closer. And I think we are mostly on the same page. We just got to figure out that's the little details. Yeah.
And Megan, we appreciate you very much as well.
She's hope so, and you need to, when you respond. Okay, I think we have some thoughts. We'll try and, um, at this point, I think we'll try and put two together, take it or leave it, whatever it is. We'll get you some feedback from students and parents that we can at the high school level, right?
Yep.
And then we'll have that for you for a special meeting. As soon as we can get that scheduled, we'll, it'll be just before the end of the month. We'll do our best for that. Okay?
Yep. I'm just thinking about my schedule, I'm like.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. It might be a ten o'clock, but you know, either way, but we'll.
All right. Um, okay, uh, without any other questions on that discussion item, moving on to property offers. I defer into Dr. Van Wagenen.
Okay, um, so I will um go ahead as well. Um, first, you, you know that we've had different conversations about two properties. Um, we've had the conversation about Bertha Boss, um, which I, I passed on to you, the communications that we've had from um legal counsel um of Acme Township as well as uh, uh, from representation of Acme Township, and you've heard some public comment tonight. Um, so looking for some further direction from there, um, that, uh, we, we have a couple of different thoughts to kind of put out there. But um, also for tonight, an opportunity to have a discussion on the Board of Administration building here, the Ira Top- Ida Tompkins Building. Um, we have a presentation that Christine Thomas will introduce you to and, and lots of different thoughts. And, and hopefully we will have some direction on the two properties moving forward. So I'll pass it off to Christine.
Thank you. Um, so the prior feedback at the board meeting and at Board Finance and Operation, there was a lot of questions about what we would do with the building, where we would go, what some cost estimates would be, so we took the time to get that information for you. Um, in this packet, there's a lot of reading material. I have Gordon Van Weeran here. Um, he's from Trune. He's also a commu- commercial real estate agent. Um, he's longtime TCAP's attorney. Uh, I've dealt with him on properties for a number of years. Um, I also have one of the developers um here who made the offer. Uh, Will Bartlett is here. Um, doesn't have a presentation per se, but if you have specific questions that it would be helpful for him to answer, um, he's open to doing so. So what I thought I would do is give you an overview of what I have in the packet and give you some opportunities to take a look at the information. Um, so Gordon has provide um a communication uh for you as it relates to the property um and um what you have the authority to do with the property. Um, I would just remind you that um it's not legal to go in a closed session for selling property. It's only legal for us to go in a closed session to buy property, so all of this would have to take place in open session, which is why I'm providing the material for you. Um, so we have a memo from Gordon. Um, it was uh suggested that we get some um outside expert opinions, if you will. Um, I reached out to Kevin Endress at Three West. He provided an email opinion and some thoughts to consider for board members. I also reached out to Doug Luciani uh from Cunningham Limp. He also emailed an opinion. Um, I did have a conversation with Jean Durenzi from the DDA. She used to uh be with the county and we had a lot of conversation um about this property and the tax advantages for a developer. Um, and she is available if any board member wanted to have a discussion with her about her opinion on the property and the offer that's in front of us. Um, I also provided, um, Gordon reached out to uh an expert um that does appraisal specific for school buildings in the state of Michigan. He's out of Lansing, and he did take a look at all three proposals, all three appraisals that we've had since two thousand and nine. Um, you know, they vary quite differently and the approach that was taken to value the land um is a little bit different. So he took a look at all three proposals and provided his expert opinion, um, knowing that he does deal specifically with school buildings. Um, and then I just, as a reminder, provided the two thousand and nine, two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-two appraisal reports. Um, I did include, um, if you recall, we had uh the RFP that went out for any proposals for this building specifically, and we got two proposals. One was a hundred thousand dollars, the other was uh two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. So I included those as well as the proposal from Keel Capital at a million dollars. Um, and then I did provide uh more information, I think, um, I'll stop talking when I, when I'm done with the summary of what's in here, so you can start looking at it. But I think the conversation about where would we go, when would we go and how much it would cost is a little bit later in the packet. So I did get a draft estimate uh for the Boardman Administration, for the administrators to move. Would be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get Glen Loomis ready for us to move with offices and partitions. Um, you will get as part of pre-bond planning, a cost estimate to redo Glen Loomis to get ready for central grade. So that's another cost that would have to be considered into pre-bond planning for the two thousand and twenty-four bond. Um, and then I also got a cost estimate, which it's been, it's been staying pretty steady. To move the print shop to Saban is about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus, plus ten thousand dollars to move the equipment. So it's been a million since we've been looking at this for several years, and it's pretty much about that same amount. Um, with a total construction budget with a ten percent contingency, about one point two million. So almost cost neutral if you consider the purchase price of a million dollars.
And on that, just jumping into that last part, which is plenty you just said, but a lot of the work on Saban, at some point, we have to do. Like, is there, do we have a separation of the?
Well, so if you go to this document at the very end, it's the second to last page, I tried to just create a timeline of events. Um, very, very simple. Um, but it would be if the board is open to selling this building and working with the developer. Um, it would be um authorizing the superintendent and/or his designate to negotiate a purchase agreement um and sharing your thoughts on what you would like to see in that purchase agreement. And then it would be um, once that is accepted, if it's accepted by the board as written, we would have to hire an architect to do renderings. At this time, I have very base level cost estimates from a construction manager. I don't have architect rendering, so that would still have to take place. Uh, but I believe we can get into construction. The minimal construction just for printing at the Saban department could start anywhere from January to July of twenty-four. If you recall, the offer did give us a year to move. And then the Glen Loomis, um, we really could move sh- um quicker than a year because it's really creating some offices in classrooms that aren't permanent, so that we have the classrooms available for central grade. So that work can really take place in less than a year. Um, the August two thousand and twenty-four vote, you will get information from our construction management and architect team on the pre-bond planning, on what a cost would be to abate and upgrade and bring Saban up to code the rest of the building. Um, I'm only recommending the old cafeteria. That would be where a print shop would go. The whole entire rest of the old elementary school still needs abatement and upgrading, um, which would be part of that uh two thousand and twenty-four bond. Um, then if you look at the overall uh timeline that we had laid out when we first started talking about an August two thousand and twenty-four vote, um, administration could stay at Glen Loomis for two years. Right now, tentatively, we would have central grade moving into Glen Loomis in September of two thousand and twenty-six for their transition of construction. That gives us two full years after the bond vote to do the abatement and upgrade at Saban, so that we could be relocated there. So it's a domino effect, but we have plenty of time in each scenario to do the appropriate moves. And the Saban uh abatement and renovation needs to take place regardless of what's going to be housed in the building. And I only went, um, because of strategic plan, asked for a three to five-year facility plan. I stopped at two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, there's just so much beyond five years that could change that's hard to lay out a plan.
So the, and, sorry, I know you just said it, but I was focusing on a couple of things. On the date, so the end goal would be to have everything in Saban, including administration?
The end goal would be to have administration at Glen Loomis.
Okay, sorry.
That, that is currently now.
Yeah.
By two thousand and twenty-eight?
Yeah, there's some things in there, you know, the, we've talked about central grade, you know, as in that. Would you want to use that building for another purpose, early childhood or something? So, you know, could we stay at Saban if we had to, if there was another purpose for Glen Loomis that the board five years from now decides? We could. That does give us that flexibility. Um, ultimately, our, our, our want, as things are sitting right now, would be to go to Glen Loomis and be in town. But this wouldn't exclude us from staying at Saban if we had to in the, in that scenario.
What if, what if we uh didn't go to Glen Loomis? What if, what if administration went to Saban with still the long-term goal of being back at Glen Loomis, but you cut out the in-between time period at Glen Loomis?
Our problem is it's gonna take some renovation time for Saban.
We need the bond vote to get the money to abate and upgrade the old part of the building.
Gotcha.
That's why we can't.
Yeah.
This, this was as close to a cost neutral plan uh to get us out of the building um and to be relocated. Printing at their permanent location, us temporarily for two years.
Or permanently, depending on what the scope looks like in five years.
So I, I rushed through the explanation of all that data, but please feel free to review some of that and ask any questions. Um, I, I do think that um Gordon, Gordon's opinion is uh pretty lengthy as it relates to some legalese, and I'm not sure that you have all those questions, but I do think it would be important to read um what Kevin Endress and Doug Luciani prepared just as community members that have both provided some guidance for us in the past as relates to properties.
What's the request for tonight? There's a lot of information here.
Yeah. My recommendation is that um a decision is made on if the desire is to sell the building, that the board give the superintendent or his designate the authority to uh negotiate a purchase agreement with the caveats that you are looking for. If there's a certain purchase price you're, you're interested in, if there's any caveats about how the building would or wouldn't be used. Um, those would all be things that we could take back with Gordon's assistance and have a conversation with the developer.
It, it would ultimately have to come back to the Board of Education for final approval. So anything we would be doing would be subject to this board's review and approval.
And while I know we have that, I also don't want to lead staff and community members and other companies down.
Well, and, and that's one caveat I'd like to give to this. One of the recommendations I do have is that if the board were to choose to give authority to the superintendent and designate forward, would also ask that we have an opportunity to have a community um meeting um with neighbors and such to meet with the developer, to have discussions and conversations of what things could look, and to have that. I think that that would be really important to the board. I think, you know, from just different conversations I've had with board members over our length of all of this. I think that's an important piece. If you choose to go there and that, that feedback be considered and see if there's a, a fit all around there that we could then bring back to the board. And if there's just not a fit, then I can bring that back to the board too.
Do, do you have a developer in mind?
We have the developer here, actually, with us, even.
So it's Keel Capital, and we have Will Bartlett here. Um, he and I have discussed the potential of a public meeting where community members were able to come and have conversation and ask questions and actually see the layout that's been presented. Um, one of the caveats in the uh letter of intent is a conversation that's happening uh with the city as it relates to zoning. Um, currently, they have a question, I believe, on the agenda, their July seventeenth meeting, but they may put it off to August. So some of that is a little bit unknown. I, I don't think we'd come back. Um, there, there's a potential we could come back with something in August, but waiting for the city to make that decision would be helpful before we would come back with any kind of agreement that would be recommended for approval.
That would make a huge difference, or potentially might make a huge difference in its value, correct?
Takes some caveats off of having any kind of um.
Special zoning requirements change, yeah.
Yeah.
Special zoning requirements change, yeah.
So wondering that, let me give you one more piece, and I did send you an update this morning on this. A part of our process, we've been working, as you know, on educator housing projects and with IFF, with Interlockin, with the ISD, as well as GTACs. Of one of the, when they put out the properties, they put all of our different properties out there, and we did get one response for this property from a group. It is considerably less money, considerably less in scope, about $620,000. So you can see just the dollar amount difference there. So that is there. I do want to make sure that you understand that there is somebody else that has an interest with that. But it is considerably less, and, you know, I think our thoughts are, let's see where this conversation might go if the board's willing. But, you know, knowing that that other one is there, if there can't be a consensus or something that the board's comfortable with, with the offer that is considerably more at this point.
I think I just, I guess I'm a little bit frustrated, and I don't, I don't want to say anything to, you know, but I feel like when we look back at what happened with Bertha Voss on our, the original first offer that we got, because we, I'm gonna just say it, ran around in circles and couldn't really execute on it because we felt like the board needed to have a decision, we lost out on that potential offer and opportunity. So then, back to the drawing board, we say we're gonna put out an RFP on both buildings. We talked about hiring commercial real estate agents, and here we are like a year later, and I receive a packet in my hand that's this thick. And I feel a little bit, you know, and at our last meeting, when we talked about Acme Township and purchasing Bertha Voss, I specifically asked the question that if we thought we countered it with regards to an as-is clause, did we think they were gonna accept it? And the answer was yes. So now the board is, there's been some media posts that we have now, once again, caused this debacle with buying Bertha Voss. And so there's this pressure of like, we're trying to do the right thing, we know it costs a lot of money, we want to sell the building, but yet here we are with no agreed offer on Bertha Voss. And so, you know, again, given this material, I mean, this is the first time, it's just an email from a commercial real estate agent that walks through his thought process, no opportunity to ask any questions. It's, you know, one opinion on an offer that we have on the table, and then supporting documents to support this offer and allow administration to move forward. And I guess it's just really frustrating to come to the table when we've been asking for some things in the past, I feel like.
But I've asked for clear direction, and I've not been told, go hire a real estate agent. I've not been given that clear direction from the board.
I felt like that conversation was at our last board meeting.
I think.
That's what must happen, I just need to be told.
Remember, we had the conversation, I don't think. I think it was an RFP. I think, no, that was at the last board meeting, but I think when we originally did this the first time, it was RFP.
It was the RFP.
Right, it was RFP.
No, I mean.
But at the last meeting, I do remember.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The offer that's currently on the table that we're talking about, we discussed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are we doing ourselves a disservice without hiring a commercial, you know, commercial real estate agent?
And this came in in between. So like I say, if you want to go do that, give me that direction, that's what we'll do. If you want to look at this offer, that's what we'll do. I just need a clear direction from four members of the board to tell me what to do.
But we've never had timelines presented before on any of the offers we've had in front of us, on how do we move forward, what does this look like?
The last one we negotiated, as we were told, brought you back what it was. The board made a vote and a decision, and the offer was withdrawn.
See, I think for me, the timeline was what, was last time, I think, the board feedback was.
Was they wanted timeline on moving costs, all those elements, and that's what we brought back.
On all of our buildings, not just on the two that we have an opportunity to sell. I mean, we've been asking for an infrastructure analysis since I've been on the board five years.
So that's what we're doing with the hiring of an architect and a construction manager. I don't have all that information until they're done, and they're starting to present it. At Board Finance, we presented some information, and we'll present more on August 16th. This offer is here now. I don't have an, overall, on every single building until all of the facility assessments are done and presented. We hadn't worked with any outside entities to do assessments like that since about 2012.
But don't you feel like these buildings that are in question in front of us on a timeline impact our whole vision of TCAPs and our infrastructure?
That's what we're trying to get to, it's like.
But the previous board, you remember, we asked what properties we had an interest in. The board gave me direction, and these are the two.
And we went out for an RFP on two properties.
That's the direction we were given.
I know there's a desire for a bigger plan, it's just gonna take a little bit longer. In the meantime, we did ask for offers on two buildings and said we were willing to sell them.
Erica, how long would it take to hire a commercial real estate agent?
Well, and I don't disvalue the email from Kevin Endress. He's one of the best. I mean, for sure, I'm not saying that it's hard to walk into a meeting with, I mean, I've got a legal opinion, I have an opinion, I have Doug Luciani, I have.
So, yeah.
You know, and I'm just, and I'm just trying to say from a board member, like, this is very difficult to walk into. Especially when you're talking, there are neighbors involved, there are, I mean, we have an Acme Township representative here, it's just.
So do you want a month to review it? Is that what you want?
I don't think, I don't think there's any way we can review it. That's why I'm struggling even, even what guidance would be, because I don't know.
Just got these papers in the last 24 hours, we've been asking.
And we were struggling, because I know the board had desired a study session, but we couldn't get one scheduled, so I was asked to just bring it today, so I apologize.
No, I know, and I'm not, I just.
It's just we do have an offer on the table.
We tried to do a special meeting, and board members couldn't do it. They asked for a special meeting, we asked, and we couldn't get four members to show up.
And I think, I think we probably have a lot of the information we now need, it's just processing that information.
Yeah, right.
Which is a problem, because unfortunately, we may process this information even in a few hours, but then we can't have a public discussion about it until the next time.
What if we bring this to our next special meeting?
You could do that.
Yeah, but we, I mean, typically speaking, we're threading a needle with those meetings that we need all the time we can get. So loading up on a special meeting on multiple things is often difficult, we can see, but I would not count on it, because sometimes we get like a, we've had it, like, I have to be there at, you know, 8:35, and I have to, so we often have really narrow, weird time windows for special meetings.
I have another question, and maybe you guys can answer this. So with a commercial real estate agent, if this property is not yet zoned for commercial, as a commercial property, how would that be impacted by a commercial real estate agent? Does it, is there any difference?
I think that's what they can recognize.
Gordon, I don't believe so.
No.
No, that's not.
But it's a, what is it?
It's a contingency to get rezoning that would be part of it.
So it has to be public. It goes through the same process, so it's.
Just wanted to make sure there was no.
The offer is obviously, you know, subject to or not subject to rezoning, so like, that's.
And I, you know, I feel bad it's so late. I had intended to give everybody the opportunity to really look through it as if we were in a study session, or if we had gone to closed session and you read an attorney's opinion. That's what my intent was, it just, unfortunately, there was a lot else on the agenda.
Erica, what are the, this is your wheelhouse, so that's why I'm deferring to you.
It's just, I mean.
I agree. I'm glad you feel this way. This is a lot of information to me too. But what are your two biggest concerns? Is it the purchase price that they're offering? And we don't have enough feedback from community?
No, I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with the purchase price or with what's being presented. I guess the ability for me personally to do my due diligence on this is very frustrating. And I think the second piece to that is just, yeah, I mean, I think for me to be able to do my due diligence on this and to do my research and to, you know, it's just, I guess, the properties that are in question have just been juggled for a while. And I guess that's also a frustration of, you know, we still have Bertha Voss do that's hanging out there that we, you know, and, you know, and that's frustrating.
But the board made a vote, and did that, and it got, it withdrew from the potential buyer.
But I wish then we would have invited Acme Township to come and present to us as what does this look like if we counter with an as-is?
It's been a week.
And those discussions are still going to.
Got an email today that they want it sent out. I mean, we negotiated as the board said, brought it back, and we've had a week.
I understand. I'm just saying that with regards to these properties, there's been a lot of just, there's been a lot. And so as a board member, I don't feel like I've done my due diligence in any sense of the, I just don't.
Well, I think you have a lot of information on this building now.
I would say, I would say, I mean, I'm an attorney, I would never go into a negotiation right now on this or make a decision about it tonight.
And we wouldn't, because we wouldn't have a purchase agreement, I think the question is, is could we give any guidance? And I don't even think I can, like, I just don't feel like, I think it's something that we can say that we're interested in. We still, all of our previously stated intentions are still correct, that, but now we have to process the timeline, the Saban, the Glen Loomis. I mean, this is like, a lot of our questions have been, where's central grade gonna go, and here and then. These have been questions we've been asking for, so it's great we have it, but, yeah, it's a lot. And this one, probably one of the biggest questions we've got to deal with as well, like these properties, so.
And I guess that's what I'm looking for. I guess I'm looking for other board members to say, hold on a second, and, you know, and I guess, so thank you for that.
I don't feel comfortable voting on anything tonight. I'm trying to, the only thing I don't know if I could give is, you know, obviously we have people in the room so they can hear it, which is actually great, because oftentimes we're talking about, you guys can't. I think we want to, we're very interested in still moving forward, we've just got to do our due diligence, which is unfortunate. We can explain to you at this time is that with the public side, we leave the room and we can't talk about it amongst each other. So we have to kind of process it, we can, you know, have, I can talk to Andrew, and that's fine, but we can't have any sort of consensus. And so that really delays the timeline. That said, is, I think we're all in the same boat that we, and we could give John the guidance to say what we just said, but since you're in the room, you can hear it yourself, so. Yeah, we can, we can invite, if the board's okay with that, we can invite the person to speak, so.
My name is Will Bartlett. My business partner, Tom Air, unfortunately couldn't be here, his father-in-law passed away, he was planning on it. But while I didn't grow up here, I have deep ties to Traverse City. My wife's family is from here, she's an Eastern Elementary graduate, Traverse City Central graduate. We're planning to move back to Traverse City. We bought a piece of property on Old Mission Peninsula. My business partner, he has been coming to Northern Michigan for his entire life. His parents live in Toppinabee. His brother is a third-grade teacher at Blair Elementary. And so we feel really passionate about this project. We would love to do this project, but we have a lot of other projects that we're evaluating, and there's a lot of pulls on our capital. And we need to, and it's a big decision for the board, and I understand that there's a lot of information and things that don't necessarily pertain to me, but pertain to the board with moving the administrative offices and the print shop and everything else. But we have to have kind of a go-no-go decision. Otherwise, we need to focus our efforts somewhere else. And if, for one reason or another, our proposal or our offer isn't the right one, that's totally fine. You know, no offense taken, but we need to move on and do something else. So I appreciate all the consideration. My contact information is in the materials, and I'm available at any time. I currently live in Milwaukee, so I've been here for the last 10 days, but I'm happy to jump on a Zoom call at any time. And if there's a meeting of this board or community meeting, we want to be good neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. I'm happy to come here anytime, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I, how soon do you need a decision? That's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Just thinking about your cycles, you know, I would like to have understanding that my hope was that you would see the information tonight and authorize direct negotiation of a purchase agreement. I would really like to have that happen by, like, the authorization of that by no later than the, is it the meetings at the start of the month, right?
August 14th.
Second Monday. Okay, second Monday. I would really like to have that on August 14th. And that's just not, obviously, that's just giving the authority to negotiate a draft purchase agreement.
Can I ask, have you ever negotiated with a school board before? I'm just curious.
But we're open, and, you know, I reached out to Christine via cold call. And just to be clear, I mean, you could definitely, the way to maximize profit on this building is not to put six cottage homes in the center for kind of starter homes for people. It would be to maximize the density and do as many 2,500 square foot townhomes as possible. But we, in talking with, you know, there needs to be a community benefit aspect to this. So while we haven't negotiated with the school board before, we are receptive, we want to do the right thing. We need to do something that makes financial sense so we can raise debt and equity for this. But we want to, we want to provide some level of community benefit. Our attempt to do that was with the cottage homes in the center of the property, and we want to be good neighbors to the people that live around here.
Since we're asking questions, I have a question. I mean, your offer is contingent on the zoning changes from the city. I mean, I'm not convinced that that's gonna happen relatively soon. I mean, you could easily get a special zoning change, and I know the Planning Commission is always in favor of housing. Granted that it's below, whatever, 100 feet, which I don't think you're proposing. Is it 60? I don't know, whatever. You know, I mean, that clause, you know, we could get, we could get all the way to a purchase agreement, and because you still have that potential clause, I mean, we could be sitting in the same spot in six months, you know, because that clause is in there. And meanwhile, we potentially could forego other interested parties.
We could, and I think, I'm certainly hopeful, and it seems like from the various city commission, or the Planning Commission hearings, that there was, like your cell phone policy, there was agreement on 90% of the package that went up to the city commission, and it really, all the consternation was on ADUs and short-term rentals, which weren't even part of the new zoning. But that doesn't, that doesn't pertain to this, to like, cluster housing or any of the other zoning changes at all. You're right, we could go through a rezoning process, where we go through the formal city commission process. That's a much longer process, that's a more expensive process. It would take a long time to get through for that. We proposed this plan because it would be a by-right development with an administrative process under the, hopefully, new zoning code to get to what's, you know, diagrammed for you on the paper. If it's a rezoning process, then I think we would look at it differently because we were trying to solve for something that we could do by right. If we would have to go through the full rezoning process, I think our bias would be to add, to look at a different plan and not be necessarily restricted by what's currently by right, because we'd be asking for the rules to be amended.
Can I ask what your price point would be for these townhomes?
It's, I mean, it's tough to kind of, to be determined, because, you know, I, you, read a little bit about your background. I mean, tell me what interest rates are gonna be in 24 months and what construction costs are gonna do. I would love to be able to answer this. Part of like, being a developer is taking on that uncertainty and saying like, I don't know exactly what they're, what they're going to be. But you can see what the sizes that we're contemplating for the townhomes are for the A, B, and C units. And you can take a look at kind of price per square foot for those types of units. And I think that, you know, that's what they would sell for today, I think, is kind of our expectation of plus or minus where they'd go for.
Any other questions before we resume discussion?
Thanks, thank you.
So I've got a question for counsel since he came all this way. Yeah, so we have, you know, what, three different offers, I think, now, ranging from $100,000 to $1 million, plus three different.
Appraisals.
Appraisals on the property going up to like, $3.5 million or something like that. I mean, in your opinion, how much impact does the actual current zoning have on that? And if we were to, you know, start the process of negotiating with someone under the current zoning with their intention of changing zoning, how much is that weighing on the, on the purchase, the offer price?
It's huge. It's gonna affect the ultimate purchase price of the property. And in terms of what the board does. um, because there's nominal bonded debt on this property, uh, there's really no IRS restrictions in terms of selling the property. The offers that you have are fair value type offers. Um, I think what needs to be considered is in looking at the property, this is a school building. The highest and best use of a school building is for education purposes. Uh, there's been no one coming forward with offers to to buy and use the property or the building. So I think really the question is, um, was the board looking at doing in terms of selling this property and and moving forward? And I think a long-winded answer to your question is yes, the rezoning is critical to value. And what you have in front of you from the developer is a non-binding letter of intent. So it's really not an offer per se. It's not binding on either party. It's kind of an expression of interest that the developer may be interested in moving forward, subject to certain contingencies. What you can do in the purchase agreement is start removing those contingencies over time. Have time periods for removal of your uh, physical inspections, your your environmental, things like that. But but at the end of the day, this rezoning or uh, whatever new zoning is going to be critical for value.
I I kind of went through your letter or your your um, thing here and it, it was like two million dollars or something difference. So in value, um, per the zoning, so.
Yeah, the, in terms of the appraisals that were done, the three appraisals over the last many years, it it really, in my opinion, comes back to the value of the land, not the building. I I don't think you're going to find a developer who's willing to renovate this building. It's too costly. And and with with old school buildings, if if they don't get renovated, they tend to deteriorate. So I I think based upon everything I've seen, and there's a lot of information you're getting tonight. And and I understand due diligence and the need to look at that. But I think you have an expression of interest that's worth looking at. And with the rezoning and removal of certain contingencies, that's what negotiating a purchase agreement is all about. And I would add, in in terms of the potential sale of of the property, the the board could uh, put something in the purchase agreement about the demolition of the building to make sure it's down. Um, that it doesn't sit vacant for years and and become an eyesore. You can put a requirement that money be escorted closing to have the building demolished within a certain period of time. And I I understand it's a, it's a very challenging issue because this building is has been around as part of the community and everything. But from what I've seen over a lot of years, if you vacate a building, it will deteriorate and eventually you'll be tearing it down.
If this building were in your community and you were on the school board and this offer were coming to you, would you accept it? Would you vote to start the negotiation?
I I would. I mean, I, again, I've, I've, this is uh, my thirty-eighth year of doing this and and I I have offers on my desk for for a single, uh, you know, story of of schoolhouses in in the U P and eighteen uh, vacant school buildings in a in an urban school district. And the common thread is the highest and best use is for education purpose. And if you don't have that, then to try to do something with an old building is very challenging. So my answer is yes, I would.
Thank you.
Can I? The other question I had is, you know, this plan in keeping with what we discussed before about a work, uh, workforce housing?
That is, you know, a part of the conversation that I think would have to happen, you know, from that of um, you know, there are other offers out there that have that, but again, far less in what the value of the property is worth from that standpoint. So again, I think the board, the board's going to have to weigh purpose and value and community, you know, needs and make a decision on where can all those three land. And the question is, is can we work with a developer that meets those three things as close as possible? Of the board doing its due diligence to get as most out of the property as possible, meeting, you know, the needs of the community, you know, from that standpoint, um, and that it goes for the right purpose. And I think when we went down this road originally, talking about which properties we'd even want. And I think when we go back to the first conversation about Bertha Voss, that's kind of what led to that first offer not being accepted is what do we, what's the best want for the community? What's the best, you know, need? And so it was going to the township versus, you know, a thought that way. So, you know, somehow the board has to come to a consensus of, you know, are are you comfortable with working with a developer that would tear it down and build something new that meets the needs of the community and fits the community? If not, can you find a developer that'll redo the building? But again, that it's definitely going to be, as Gordon just told you, at much less of a number of value that the board will get for it, if anything at all. Um, I think those are the, those are the things that you have to weigh, that you're just going to have to come up with an answer for for us to move forward.
Will did start to kind of allude to it, but the, on the drawing, the two uh, buildings labeled C, that was something after he and I discussed the RFP and the board's desire for workforce housing was added to their plan. So their original thought process was changed based on what the RFP stipulated. Um, those being the smaller size that it is was meant to be to meet that need.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, those are teacher housing or teacher, well.
I mean, it's hard to describe. What what is workforce housing? What is affordable housing? What is the missing middle? It it's all intended to be a smaller piece of property that could be marketed at a smaller amount that then employees working at TCAPs could possibly afford to live and work downtown.
With workforce housing and and affordability with um, there there's certain rules. You can't stipulate necessarily what job a person has to do to afford, you know, to be able to go into that. We're working through that right now in Blair Township in a really unique kind of way, but um, you know, it is hard to, you know, with fair housing standards, you can't just say only these people can and these people can't. So it's really careful. But workforce housing, there is some ability there today.
I mean, I think that this plan definitely provides a need, right? There's a need for housing. Now, whether or not these are affordable housing or not, I'm probably looking at it. Probably six of them might be. Um, but there's six more affordable type housing than we have currently and there's twenty more homes than we currently have in this neighborhood currently or, you know,
Yeah.
under this plan. So I mean, I do agree, we're working with this, you know. Part of me wants the most money possible so that we can provide the most opportunity for the students, right? That's what, that's what our main objective is. Um, you know, so, but we also want to be good neighbors and, you know.
And we have community members here. I think they need to be a part of that conversation.
So, but I mean, looking at squares on a ma, on a, on a map, I mean, it looks like it fits with the community. I mean, we've got row homes across this, across the river over there, so.
I sort of feel like we we do have a little bit of time to to come up with a, whether we agree or not. So I feel Erica's discomfort in that a little bit and yours as well, Scott.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a gut feeling that's different to what I require. I don't, I'm not saying that I see any problems whatsoever. I'm just saying, I.
You want to read the stuff?
Read this, yeah. Got a big photo in here, it's going to, you've got to read it, so.
Yes.
It's a lot of information, it all at once. And and I apologize, certain things because of the holidays were challenging to get um, to Christine. And so um, I, again, I'm not recommending the board make any type of a decision tonight whatsoever. And read the information and and we're more than willing to answer questions or do whatever needs to be done.
I mean, I guess, uh, and Erica, I look at you as well, is I would be comfortable to say, I mean, again, this is all public and you can see the meeting work on as many of those details, like on the LOA, basically, to get towards as close to a purchase agreement as possible so we can get some of those things down, especially like breaking down the the uh, inspection periods and anything we can get closer to, I would suggest would be worthwhile timing. Um, but I don't think we can give an indication of acceptance. Just, I think we're open to the idea still. There's nothing that is uh, flagging for me that's bad. I just don't have time to review.
I I think in order to have those conversations, we would need a, Dr. Van Wagner would need authority.
He would. And that's why I'm saying, like, if, as long as everyone understands where the board is, you know, that we, I don't want it to get to the point where you come back and there's a a purchase agreement and then we say, well, we reviewed the due diligence and we have a problem with it. Like, as long as we all entering into it, understanding that in good faith, then I think it's okay to pro- progress. We just still will have to go through the due diligence, so. So it's giving authority to continue the process as long as everyone understands that we are going to do our due diligence in the next thirty days and come back at the meeting. It just, I just, it just, the only reason that makes a difference is it gets, you don't have to wait till August fourteenth to start doing anything. And to your point, you can move it forward. So I guess it would be my compromise. There's no a commitment or threat, just gets us closer.
Do you want to make a motion?
Not a motion. Uh, so. Yes. Um, yeah, I can make a, I mean, I can make a motion. So I would, I would make a motion to authorize a superintendent uh, to continue negotiations towards a purchase agreement on four-one-two Webster Street.
Second.
All right. Um, any other discussion? Does that give you enough? Do you need it?
I don't know.
The only thing it didn't do was um, or designate, so it would be on you to do the negotiating.
Oh.
That would be the only tweak if he would like.
I can, I'll just withdraw and restate it. I would draw my motion and I would state uh, my motion to uh, I motion uh, to authorize a superintendent or designate to enter into negotiations uh, to develop a purchase agreement for four-one-two Webster Street.
Second.
All right. Everyone good now? Still need something?
Trying to figure where that line's at, that you're talking, you know, what what do we go up to and what don't we cross in those conversations?
Well, you you're still going to have to come back to the board for a final approval.
I think it allows you to get for any of the details that you can.
Yeah. And Gordon can help with this piece of it. And we do have maybe possibly a July seventeenth vote at the commission about zoning, which may take one of the big pieces off the table. We don't know. But.
I think it allows you to progress it.
Happens.
At rezoning, it's July seventeenth?
Well, it's, it's like it might be on their agenda. I just don't know if they'll keep it on the agenda or if they'll move it to their August meeting.
And I would recommend that the Board of Education make any comments to Christine. We can't obviously negotiate or talk uh, among the board members, but uh, comments from the board members can go directly to Christine for review, based upon the reviewing the documents and due diligence.
Yeah. So I think, I think what it does allow is it gives you the authority to do it. So you, no board member can say, why did you do that?
And I just want the board comfortable with it. Erica, especially want you comfortable with this one.
That's why I looked at Erica when I made it. I feel that that's okay, but I, I share, I'm exactly the same spot as you are.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do want to authorize. It just, this one feels different than the others. And so, um, yeah, I just.
All right.
I said what I had to say and I, you know, so.
I think we could hold a meeting with um, the community, um, just to get their feedback so you guys would have some sense. I think we can do that before August.
I think we, regardless of that, we've got a lot more realistic understanding of what this property can or cannot be useful when value-wise, so.
And that's been the hard part for us is that, you know, we've been trying to evaluate like through all these of can you really restore the building? And we're, the feedback we keep getting from now, multiple professionals is, that's a stretch. You know, the question is then, okay, if the, if that's just not financially feasible for anybody, if that can't be, what's the best that can be that especially the community and the neighbors would have some same thoughts of, okay, this is something that we think would add to and contribute to our community, not something that's a detractor. I think, I I know that's really important to the collective board. And so I want to make sure we value that if that's the direction you collectively also feel. And we're just, we're hearing it for more and more. While we do have had some with lower amounts say, yeah, it might be possible. We've had others that say, not so much and it's a lot more cost-effective and financially stronger for the district to do something new on the property, so.
And that's why we started the RFP in the first place was we had an appraisal of three million and I think it was myself and a few other board members and a majority of us was like, if if someone wants to give us three million dollars and maintain the property as is, then we should take that. Let's see if that's realistic. We've proven the fact that it's not.
It's not. And you've got some information in here that I think will explain that a little bit. I think Gordon's done a nice job of giving you another, a third-party evaluator of all those to give you a real idea of what it really is. You've seen now multiple offers kind of come across in both aspects.
Yeah, and that was the bit I was most interested in was the method, method, ah, jeez. Uh, how how everything was reconciled between the appraisals and all the comments like this uh, this report here, which is very, very lengthy and detailed.
We've never had these those before on any other office. We've never had an opinion from a commercial real estate agent. We've never had an opinion from Doug Luciani. We've never had an so that's, that's a little bit more of my frustration too, is just why all the, you know, why this time do we get? You know, again, it's just, you know, I I do support the conversation. I do want to sell the building. I do want to sell Boardman. I'm not saying, I mean, you know, we we know the situation of these buildings. I think it's just been the process. Um, you know, and and again, just looking at this packet, I mean, we've never had a ti, you know, timeline. So I, it just feels like we're kind of being led into a decision. It just doesn't sit right with me. And that's all, that's all I, I just feel like I need to say.
Don't want to push you and have you feel uncomfortable from that standpoint, so. Hopefully you have what you have I'd want on this. And again, and I think we'll skip here in a minute to act me if there's something more the board wants, you know, we can, we can do that, so.
All right. Um, so there is a motion on the table and a second. Who, sorry?
Well, no, he's second.
Um, any other discussion? Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Um, moving on to the next discussion item on three-seven-two-three Shaw Road, i.e. Bertha Voss. Ben, do you have a comment?
So um, I provided you the correspondence. We had a email from uh, from the uh, lawyer for Acme Township. After our last meeting, the board authorized the sale as, you know, as condition was. And we had received an email from Council of Acme Township that they were withdrawing the offer. Um, we since had an email um, from Gene that was spoken public comment that I forwarded you onto the, you know, as well, and then got an email from Gene today saying would like to sit down and have conversations again. And so I'm just looking again for, you know, is that something the board wants us to go back and talk with Acme Township representatives again? Do you want to hire a commercial real estate agent tomorrow? You know, um, we've had some discussion. Christina's thought there is some things if we did move forward with this about just keep in the building and using it for storage. You know, from that aspect is a possibility that she has. And so just really looking for, John, go do this.
I still, I mean, as again, a resident of Acme, I still would like to see something done with that building and I like the vision and and uh, obviously read some some of the comments pretty briefly again because it was, it was late uh, to read, but um, I'm still in support of of trying to find out what those issues are and if we can resolve them, so.
Agreed.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, assuming all those community partners that were in that initial proposal are still at the table as well. I mean, I thought that it was a win-win for the community all around, I thought. Um, you know, tattle, fire.
Yeah.
I mean, all of those, daycare.
So just procedurally here, I think, I think I know what I'm looking for is that we made an offer. It was, it was withdrawn.
Yeah.
So at this point, it's kind of a little bit start over for me. I think I need the board to authorize me and my represent, you know, representative to, you know, to go into negotiations with Acme Township again in that aspect of that's.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I I think um, probably the the biggest point of disagreement is purchase price. And so I I would like some feedback from the board on, you know, what, what you'd like to sell it for, like what the bottom line is.
I don't think it was just the purchase price. I think it was the unknown. I think it was just that I felt that we didn't have an agreement. The agreement that gave had so many outs that it wasn't really an agreement. It was a and because of the original price to a change in price. to a change in price, it, to me, it just felt like we weren't really agreeing on anything, it was just a document that we were signing that had a massive out that was probably gonna be used. Um, I'm still fine to, it was less about the price for me, and more about the change of terms, it was like, we're gonna get offered less, and we're not gonna actually offer you that money, we're just gonna say we're gonna give it to you, but then there's gonna be this other thing.
This is the one that was six hundred thousand or, or four hundred thousand lump sum, and then paid out fifty thousand over the next two years?
Yeah, it was two hundred thousand over the next five years.
Five years, and then fifty thousand to repair the roof?
Um, it was, it was a caveat to potentially lower purchase price if the roof needed to be replaced. So it wasn't an agreement on purchase price if the roof needed to be replaced. Which, if the roof needed to be replaced, we'd be looking at a four hundred thousand dollar purchase price.
We wouldn't sell it as is.
Yeah, which it was okay to have the inspection period to deter, like, as well, but it was just, um, the way it was worded to me was just like an, uh, an out. Which they always are.
Right.
I've done plenty of, but it, it was just worded in a way that I felt it was gonna be used, rather than oftentimes when you get purchase agreements, it's worded and then this could happen, but we don't, neither of us think it's going to, and that was why, that was my trigger.
But didn't you, you, both of you thought that with what we had proposed last meeting, didn't you think they would accept it? You thought they would have accepted it?
Yes.
And it was the change, it was really the change of the as-is clause, right, the last, that, that really, okay.
Yeah, it was firming up the purchase price to say solidly it's six hundred thousand. I, I wonder if, um, is, would they be open to more of a conversation about how that purchase price is paid? Maybe it's still six hundred, but it's not four hundred, two hundred. I'm, I'm kinda looking, I'm looking for guidance on, like, what's your bottom line, and do you have a preference in how long it takes to get it?
I mean, I think we would, for the right purpose, extend that period of time over a longer period of time, or whether it be small, you know, equal chunks, or
Sure.
whatever, I really don't mind, I think it's more of the purpose, which I think we would like. Um, I think the price is, we're roughly fine. Um, and I think that to offset some of their concerns, yeah, we can give up some flexibility on financing, which may help them as well, as, so, yeah, I don't think it's that, I'm.
Can we invite her up to ask some info? I was just asking John, and he was like, no.
We can, we can ask Jean if she has any comment, um, do you have any comment?
It's so awkward.
I know.
I made some notes. You were speaking about other property, and again, um, it's been really nice to be here, I thought your cell phone discussion was fascinating, and my brain starts to think about implementation is so important on that. Anyway, going to this, um, the, the June twelfth meeting, I, I watched from home, I wasn't well that day, and you wouldn't have appreciated my coughing. But I learned more from that meeting that I didn't know before. And we had a meeting with the Acme Board, Supervisor White and I, and, um, have insights from them, it was a closed session. So I frankly feel energized, as does Supervisor White, to sit down with you again. I don't believe it's square one, I believe it's going further down the road because we know more. So, I was thinking while I was sitting there, I'd rather be in this position than be in a position where we agree on purchase price and all the conditions, but you don't like our vision. That would be a pickle. But the vision, I, I just, I was thinking and I made a note, unsolicited, three neighbors down that road, right at Shore, and down that road have come to me, I, I haven't called them, I haven't entertained any discussions on this, and said they're so excited because we've bought the building, and I said, oh, I'm sorry, we, we, we don't have a purchase agreement in place now, but tell me why you're excited. And they proceed to talk about the different, the different, um, entities that could be there, and I wanna be clear on something. We have letters of interest from Tattle and from NMC on programming for all ages and cooking classes, and, I mean, they were just all excited. Letters of interest, those are non-binding, please know. What happens is, if and when we have a purchase agreement, then I go back to those entities, because I worked with them initially for the letters of interest, and work with them on user agreements. And that was in that, um, purchase agreement that we, we needed to do that, because if they all of a sudden decide no, you know, we'd have to think of some other way to fill that building that would be meaningful and develop, deliver to your development goals, which that vision does, and also deliver certainly to our community and, and the communities beyond, Whitewater as well. Even I think Elk Rapids will be coming in to go to some events there if this happens. So the, the vision is there, and people like it. One thing we're missing in Acme, and it's a very big thing, is community. We have no big place where people can go, unless we all rent a room at the resort or something, and, or sometimes we meet in a church where we're expecting a crowd. We don't have that community, this would give us community. And, and maybe for selfish reasons, that's why I've like, I volunteer to kind of bring this together. Because I see what it can do, my background is business development, I see what this can do. And the vision fits the zoning too, so I know in the previous conversation there was a, a concern there, but the, the vision is a shoe-in for the zoning. So at the June twelfth meeting, we heard that the building needs a new boiler and probably a new roof. Now, in a due diligence phase following a purchase agreement, we would have done deeper due diligence, because you have to pay, it could be eight, ten thousand to get the roof inspected, with, I think they have to do borings and peel back things, something we could not do now. We, we didn't have that money to spend unless we had a purchase agreement in place. But at the June twelfth meeting, we learned that, and so we started thinking, okay, and our, our purse isn't that big. I'm not saying there aren't creative ways, but I'm thinking, boy, we add the six hundred and maybe three fifty for a roof, and maybe three fifty, cause you can Google and find all this out, and in no time we're at a million three, and that's at the cash register. That's not three years or five years down the road, that's to get the building and to have a, literally a roof over our head and heat, think about it. Those are critical infrastructure pieces, and we really appreciate that that discussion was had on June twelfth, because it alerted us to that. And so we're thinking, but of course, we responded after we discussed it, that this is, we're not prepared to pay one million three at the door, or at the get-go, or immediately, whatever words you wanna use. It's difficult, we're a rural township. I heard a comment, uh, during the June, June twelfth meeting, is that the township that has to, that's getting that new sewer line, that has to pay for that multimillion dollar sewer line? And I wanted to jump through my, um, computer monitor, because yes, we are the township that is sharing in that new, um, sewer line that needs to happen before a disaster happens, and we're working with East Bay on that, that's a different budget. But yes, we need to do those things too, and so we are trying to find ways to afford what's critical for our township. I know a sewer line is indisputably very critical, but I also know creating community for seniors where there isn't one today. For, for families that wanna go to the library in the summer, but who've told me, my dog's veterinarian, said, I wanna take my son to the library, it's too hectic during the summer. It would be great to have an extension there. I mean, this is truly, I think this is like the definition of vision. We just have to find a way to afford it and put a roof over our head and heat. And probably air conditioning or whatever, but we, we, we know, I mean, this is, but, but, you know, my head's going, Supervisor White's head is going, so we said, can you talk with us again? Let's see what's there, so that this can possibly jump off paper and turn into something that is standing there delivering to the community and to your development goals when you issued the RFP. So what can we, what can we do? That's why, after speaking with Supervisor White today, I shut off the email and said, let's sit down again. I think we're continuing the road on negotiations, again, not starting over. Starting over is when everything's off the table and you have to, this is not that. I think we've all learned more things. So let's give it a shot.
Hmm, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one thing as well, I, as a, obviously it would be on your side than ours, but I wonder if there'd be Community Development Block Grant would apply with, uh, some of this as well.
I'm sorry, say again the.
A CDBG, um, grant may actually be available to Acme for this as well.
We, the, the main way we afford everything is through grants, the Sailor Boat Launch, which is the first boat launch of its kind that is for commercial and recreational fishing, just so everybody knows, that was a negotiation that Acme did, and it's great. We do everything by writing grants for our parks, we don't have the dollars to do it otherwise, so thank you for that suggestion, because we love to do grants, and we roll up our sleeves and really work hard at them.
And there's one, there's a couple of reasons why this may be very specifically a benefit for that, so we, I can pass that on as a, as a resident leader, but, um, yeah.
We, we did write, um, we, the proverbial we, I did write, um, an ARPA application and for this property, and it, it didn't get any dollars, but if you think about it, and, you know, some, some people actually said to me, it, it didn't, it wasn't an exact fit with what the ARPA dollars were going for. But anyway, w- we've tried, we, we've tried, and we will try. W- we just want to sit down and compare some ideas.
Alright.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
So, is there more, I think we were going down a path anyway, but I, do you, do we have a motion and wording, I think? I, I don't know if it's actually critical, but it's, I don't think there's anything you need that we're not gonna give you to authorize you to sit down and have this discussion and try and figure out an agreement, so. Okay. We can make a motion on it, so you have it, um, which I, anyone want to?
Sure, I, I will move that the board authorize the superintendent or his designee to, uh, negotiate on the property, uh, negotiate towards a purchase price on the property at thirty-seven twenty-three Shore Road.
Purchase agreement?
Purchase agreement. Sorry.
Second.
Second for Erica. Bethany, tight. Alright, um, any other discussion? Megan, please get out to roll call it.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, motion carries. Um, alright, Alpha Properties, and thank you, uh, everyone for attending, uh, that part, and then moving on to Policy Committee, which was the added item F. Again, it doesn't really necessarily require an action of the board, but we can do it within, uh, under my purview to create the committee, I guess, but I also wanted to just have that discussion with the board, there's a couple of different ways to do it. The general discussion is to have a policy committee that's separate to anything else that can delve deeper into it, it's gonna be a little bit more timely, because we are switching a lot of our policies from Neola to Trune. And that will take, uh, some more time, so if we can have a, a committee to work some of those details out, it may be beneficial. There was two different ways to do it, there was one to do it as a committee of the executive committee, which would be a two-member committee, um, the other option is to have it as a designated committee, um, which would be a three-person committee, um, reporting to either, like everything else would go into executive board.
Are you considering or proposing this would be an ad hoc committee, or like a permanent, just anytime that, anytime there are?
I mean, we, it would be a, I would suggest it would be at this point a, I mean, permanent's a strong word, but it will be an indefinite.
Longer than ad, longer than a, just this thing.
Like, I mean, obviously we have these changes, we've made multiple of them with changing committee structure, and this would just be another one, so we may change, decide to change it later, um, it may serve a purpose, it may be a good tool for going forward, um.
Can I bring some clarity that Connie has brought to the, to me, um, idea of starting to take a look at transitioning our policies from Neola to Trune? Um, there's some definitely advantages and things, and we do have, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, um, currently what we have here at TCAPS is a hybrid of, well, tri-pin, whatever, we have some homegrown policies that the district has created independent of any sort of service. We have Neola policies and we have Trune policies, that's a bit unusual. Um, a lot of districts will streamline going through one policy service, and so over time, because we utilize Trune as one of our, our primary educational defense firm, we've adopted a lot of their policies so that we are in line with their defensibility on, on those, which means we've replaced the Neola policies with some Trune. The difficulty when you do that is that, you know, there's a lot of reliance on multiple organizations or agencies to make sure that those policies are in fact updated in real time on our website. We have no idea right now if all of our policies reflect the latest and greatest that the board has actually approved. Um, and so this is not unique to this district, I countered it in every district I've ever worked in. My first district, I was handed a, a physical binder about this thick with papers shoved in it, and they said, we think this is the latest and greatest policy manual. Um, and so one of the things that I would recommend it is, we did make a transition, many districts have transitions to policy services offered by Michigan law firms and, and versus Neola is a Ohio corporation. Um, so Michigan law firms, no Michigan law, no Michigan districts, and so on and so forth, and my recommendation was to move forward with Trune, and there are certainly others that the board could consider, but I've utilized Trune, I've transitioned Neola policies to Trune in a previous district, um, and so I am asking to bring to the executive committee in our next meeting, Trune will be doing a presentation for all of you on what that transition might look like, and it's not a transition that occurs overnight. Thus, the need for a, a group of board members that would be willing to look at those policies, process them with members of our staff, pertinent members, if we're talking about instructional issues, obviously, you know, Associate Superintendent Prowelsey would be there, the principals would be at the table to give feedback and dialogue, when we talk about facilities policies, we would pull people in from, from, um, Assistant Superintendent Thomas Hill's team. So, and then the board would, would give their input, and then at the end of the day, we'd be bringing back the committee, however you do it, ad hoc or permanent committee, uh, bring back those recommendations for a transition, and it could take upwards of a year, and that's okay, current policies stay in place while we, while, while we work through that process. Great thing at the end of the day is that you know they're all completely updated, they're legally accurate, they reflect the most legal changes to statutory requirements, and because we've pulled our team members in as part of that process, our principals know our policies, our staff members know our policies, they were part of the creation, design, and tweaking of them that we may do to reflect what TCAPS currently does. So that would be my recommendation, and certainly doing that through a committee structure is a lot easier than bringing to the board, in June of next year, here's your whole new policy manual, please review it and approve, that would be a little daunting, I think, for the board to do, and I wouldn't ask that of you.
I support this idea thoroughly, just because as, as somebody who's a practitioner, and I, you know, part of my specialty is I work on tribal law, and so I have to know like twelve different tribal codes, and when you see patchwork, I call them patchwork codes, where they're getting from so many different sources, um, There's so many loopholes and so many things that have been dropped or forgotten, or the definition has changed and it was never changed over here, and it just causes chaos.
Well, you noticed during public comment, there was a gentleman, he was saying there was going to be two inconsistencies in policies that he was pointing, going to point out, we heard one, you know, and this gives us a chance to sit down with the principals and say, are we actually doing what this policy says what we're doing? And if we're not, then let's make sure that we're tweaking the policy in one fail swoop versus one after another after another as issues arise. So it's more being proactive rather than reactive. Are we doing what our policies say we're going to do?
Yep. So, um, that was, I can make a recommendation, uh, at the next meeting. I, I can actually create the committee. I think we actually appoint, need the board to appoint committee members, but that's, um, we don't necessarily need to do that today, but that is what I'm going to be working on. Probably be a final presentation at the next board meeting, which I may ask people to, at that point, uh, we would elect members. So that's kind of why I wanted to bring it up today because I wanted to, in the open, just say that that's discussions is going to have to happen. So. All right. So that, uh, is the last discussion item. Moving on to second public comment. Is there a second public comment?
No.
All right. And we're moving on to the closed session. So just so everyone knows, we, we move into closed session, we actually leave the room, we will return to the room when we're done. And, uh, this, uh, closed session is for superintendent quarterly evaluation, which has been requested in writing to be in closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move the, to go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a periodic personnel evaluation as allowed by the Open Meetings Act, PA 267 of 1976, Section 81A. The closed session was requested in writing by the employee.
I second.
All right, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman Vale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Motion carries, we will return to this room when we're, uh, done with closed session.
Then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education. My name is LeAnn Murci, and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus. My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murci, and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. And I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning? I have a college degree. And she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School. And now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance. The whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective. You know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murci, and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. And I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning? I have a college degree. And she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School. And now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance. The whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective. You know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance. The whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective. You know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance. The whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective. You know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murphy and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." And she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School. And now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance. The whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective. You know, it's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And while I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
All right, if there is no objection, we will return to open session. We are now in open session. Closing remarks is thanks for the evaluation. It is a standard quarterly evaluation and looking forward to more discussion in the future months. Also, the next board meeting is on Monday, August 14th, at 6:00 PM in this room. With that, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Meeting adjourned.